April 6th, 2021. Let's start with the Red's of the Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting details have been placed on the agenda to allow council members, staff and the public to participate in the meeting via teleconference pursuant to the governor's executive order N-29-20. There will be no public access at the council chambers at this time. Maxed in physical distancing is required. Remember, the public may also remotely listen to participate in the meeting via teleconference. If you wish to listen or participate in this meeting through teleconference, simply dial into the conference number below entered the ID number. During this call, if you may press star nine to raise your hand to ask to speak during the meeting. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves. Public comment. This is a time for public comment. Council may ask questions but may take no action during the public comment section of this meeting except to direct staff to prepare or report or place an item on future agenda. If you're here to make a public comment on a specific agenda item, then you may speak to it, speak at that time. If not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers state your name and million addresses so the staff can respond to your regards or your comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. Do we have any public comments this time?
Yes, we do.
Oh, good.
Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, it was a garble there. I couldn't tell. Yeah, Lorenzo, three things. First, crime. The city's, the public is very concerned about the increasing crime rate in Wyreka, but they see you doing absolutely nothing about it. I've asked about a town hall meeting so we can tell you our concerns and you can tell us why you weren't doing anything about it. Second, affordable housing. You throw up your hands and you claim there's nothing you can do about it. This is a statewide problem, but solutions start at the local level. All you've done so far. And third, this is important because lives are at stake, the obsolete traffic system in Wyreka and the many dangerous traffic intersections in town. Bruce in Oregon and the many collisions there is mentioned most, but there's many other places. Citizens are concerned about all these matters. Are you concerned and will you do anything about it?
Absolutely. We're always concerned about that, Lorenzo. And as our discussion we had here a week or two ago, the county is affordable housing. We had that discussion, you and I did. And some of the other policing issues and we talked about having a town hall meeting, which we discussed this too, Lorenzo. This is something that we are working on. And we are definitely going to have this future discussion. There's a few details that we need to work out. We are going to have something in the future, but I appreciate you bringing it back up again and we can have another discussion if you like again. I much appreciate our discussions and we will have discussion later about this.
There was nothing about town hall.
And I'd much appreciate you doing that again. Thank you. I appreciate that. Well, the town hall, I just discussed. We are gonna, we're not doing that. But there's a few details that we as a council have to work out and we're working on that.
We can't give any, we can't make any decisions right now. It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, but we are discussing it and.
We've been talking about it since Lorenzo brought it up last time. We've been trying to figure out the best way to facilitate the town hall.
We are working on that because whole company. Hopefully soon we'll be moving down another tier again, so maybe we can start having these things.
We'll find out in a minute.
So, thank you, Lorenzo. Alrighty, any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilman McCoy. I'd like to ask the council's indulgence and the city manager for a moment, if I might, on, we have, I want to thank Shelley Davis for being here from the county of Siskiyou Public Health Department with our COVID-19 update. And I was hoping that we could move item nine, which is a discussion, which is an action item, the continuance of urgency order number 855 from the ninth order, the ninth item, to the second item, which would come after Ms. Davis gives her a report to us. If that, if the council would be so moved.
Can we just agree to that or do we have to have a motion?
There's a motion to disagree on that one, as far as I know, right?
Yeah, you can just say.
Yes.
If you would all agree, I want everybody to.
Yes, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Alrighty then, we will move on to number one. County of the Siskiyou Public Health Department, COVID-19 update, Shelley Davis.
You're never much, ever.
She's gonna keep coming back.
That's right. Got your attention now.
Yeah.
Okay, evening, mayor and council members. I'm Shelley Davis. I'm the Director of Public Health for Siskiyou County. And I thought it would be good if I just gave you a brief update on where we were in regards to COVID and our vaccination efforts. We've been really taking off. So, why don't we start off with some stats for you. I'm gonna give you a lot of numbers and if you want me to repeat anything, just let me know. So, we're gonna start off with COVID. So, March 22nd, 2021 marked the first year anniversary of our very first COVID cases in Siskiyou County. So, we saw that. We can remember back on that day going, oh my gosh, I hope this doesn't last for another month or two and a year later, we're still going strong, if not stronger. But since that date, March 22nd, 2020, we have a total of confirmed COVID positive cases at 1,888 in Siskiyou County. Currently today, we have five active cases that are open and 1,867 that are deemed recovered. We also have a total count of 16 individuals that have met their demise due to COVID here in our county. Our county has tested 22,136 individuals and of those, 20,248 were all negative results. And over the year, co-motively, we have had 150 individuals hospitalized for COVID in Siskiyou County. So, therefore, I feel that we're holding our ground as you probably see our cases have been going down in the last couple of weeks. Today, we had zero positive cases and I got that number right before five o'clock and I'm like frantically saying, when was the last time we had a zero? Because none of us could remember. Yes, so that was pretty cool to have that. And we realized that a lot of this is due to our ramped up vaccination efforts that we have in county put in place. So, the county has been allocated from the state 25,830 doses of vaccine. With that, 19,433 have been administered to Siskiyou County residents. And those are the efforts of many clinics within our county, specifically more clinics in the South County. We have a couple here in North County. We also have both hospitals doing vaccination efforts and the public health as well, doing vaccinations as well. So, what that, what those numbers represent is it brings the number of residents who have completed their series, which is usually a two-shot series, down to 7,630 individuals are totally vaccinated in Siskiyou County. So, what that means is that's 18% of our county has completed their vaccinations. Of that 18%, 44% have been administered to South County folks. And many people go, so why is South County? Well, we gotta look at the amount of clinics that chose to take on the vaccination efforts compared to the North County clinics that chose to take on those efforts. So, 44% South County, 28% in North County, 13% in the West and 7% in the East County. And then we have a whopping 8% of those that live outside our county, meaning they probably work in our county because if they work here, we can vaccinate them here. 72% of those are white, 1% of those are black or African American, 7% are Hispanic or Latino, 1% Asian and 2% American Indian. Lots of effort at the Kuru tribe in vaccination efforts. They're holding clinics and doing a great job with that as well. So, that's, that's good to know. The doses that public health currently have on hand right now are approximately 6,000. And that's gonna support more mass vaccination efforts by public, by public health. We'll be hosting another clinic, a mass vaccination clinic at Fairgrounds next week on Thursday, April 15. And at this point, it is a second round vaccination and we realize that I believe there's close to 700 we have to do as a second round. But we want to then be able to open it up because the age limit of vaccinations has gone down to 16 and older. And as soon as we get those 700 people on our list, we will open it up for the rest of the county to go on. To date, we have held mass vaccination clinics in Wyreka, Mount Shasta and Tulu Lake. And with a focus on equity, we will be sending a postcard to geographically underserved populations. We're looking at Sol's Bar, we're looking for some salmon, we're looking at those in the outline areas, inviting them to register for our planned mobile clinic mini vaccination events. So, with that said, public health purchased a brand new RV, which is now our mobile vaccination clinic. It's, looks like a, looks like an RV, but it's a toy hauler. And so, with that, we can open up the back end of it and supply a pool of all of our vaccinations, things that we need and be able to perform clinics outside of the large mass vaccines, which is what we wanted to do. Good news too, is that Siskiyou County has moved down a tier on the blueprint for a safer economy into the orange category. While that tier is still a bit restrictive, it does open up a lot more than the purple tier. And if we keep up these vaccination efforts, we're definitely see ourselves going down to the yellow tier. That's definitely at the state level. It has been said to us that when you're in a tier, you have to remain there for three weeks. So, we're hoping that maybe they'll change that because of, you know, how well we're doing the vaccinations and do it quicker, but if not, three weeks from today, the sixth, we should be going down. Hopefully. As always, we keep our residents informed of the breakdown of the state's blueprint for the tiers, which everybody here probably knows you can find on the public health website as well as CDP website. So, that concludes my update. Do you have any questions for me?
April 6th, that means that on April 27th, we may be going.
Hopefully so, yeah. Fingers crossed.
Nice before summer, didn't it?
Yes. Yes, and I don't know if anybody saw the governor's press release today, but there is talk of if we can keep this moving forward because it's California, we have already vaccinated 20 million people, 4 million into those hard reach places that, you know, we know of, where our hard reach places are, but that's that, that equity thing that they're referring to. It's they need to have vaccinations go into those areas. So, we're really putting our effort into that now once we got the majority of what needed done in these larger parts of the county. But he has talked about reopening the state back up in June. So, we're gonna keep our fingers crossed for that too and hope that we can all, you know, reach that, maintain that.
Yes. For restaurants, what does, does orange mean? Was it, is orange a 25? Well, I was looking at that on like, is that 25% or 50%?
I must look it up because I can say these change all the time.
Yeah, because I thought it said, okay, I wanted to make sure.
I think it's 50%, but let me look it up for me sure. Restaurants, orange here. Of course, on this, it looks red, but it's definitely orange. Open indoors with modifications. Maximum is 25% capacity or 100 people, whichever is fewer.
Got it, okay, okay.
Yep, so.
That's what I thought.
It's not at 50 yet. 50 is the next tier.
And do you and the doctor, not doctor who?
The health officer.
The health officer, yes. Do you have any thoughts on the, what, what is your maximum, what is your goal to get the county at? I mean, I mean, because I know that a lot of counties and states are looking at getting 80% of people vaccinated because they're figuring 20% are not going to. And I know minorities are not vaccinating in very large numbers in cities Detroit, New York, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, Washington DC, just because of past indiscretions between the US government and.
Just what you can see by the stats.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, what are you guys looking for as far as, as far as the county? I mean, if you get 80% or 85%, will that be?
We'd love to see 80, 85%.
Okay, okay.
We would love to see that.
Because that takes kids into consideration also.
Yes.
Okay, that, thanks.
So, what would be, what would be the ideal number that for a county of size that the governor's looking at saying, wow, fantastic job? And what are you looking at for the county?
I think.
Realistically.
I think realistically, right now, we have done a fantastic job compared to other counties.
Yes.
We have definitely gone out there and vaccinated, like I said, 18% of our population. You're not seeing that at other counties. So, they're looking at us like we are doing the right thing. There is no magic number though, unfortunately. They do look at percentages and then they look at testing rate compared to positivity rates and then they look at how many vaccinated in the community. So, that's why our big push right now is get people vaccinated. You know, tell people in our areas that that's what we need to do to get COVID back up.
Well, I know that Klamath County, the public health officer in Klamath County has said she's, she's a little different than Jim James and, and Jackson and the Josephine County, but she's thinking that they'll have everybody vaccinated. When I say everybody, they'll be to their point where they want to be by the end of August, she thinks.
I think if we keep moving this forward as we are, I can definitely see that as well.
Are you, are you, as a county, are you guys doing just a single dose at all? Johnson, Johnson or is it just?
No, the state has not allocated any Johnson, Johnson to the public health department. They, or I don't even believe they've allocated them to, because the public health department gets the allocation of the vaccine in and then we reallocate it out to the people that want it and need it of those entities that have signed up for it. So, I do know that Johnson, Johnson is a writing for those. So, definitely, you know, those are looking for a one-shot compared to a two-shot. And remember, the efficacy is much smaller with the Johnson and Johnson. You actually get more efficacy of a one-shot Pfizer than you do of a one-shot Johnson.
Oh, really?
But it's recommended and we also recommend that you get the two shots. So, Pfizer and Moderna is what we get at the public health level. And that's what we've been vaccinating with, which makes it challenging because we have people back out and do that second dose clinic, 1,200, 700. So, it's challenging for us.
Double the manpower.
Right, double the manpower. I gotta say, I have got to put shout out to all those volunteers that have taken on coming and doing all these clinics with us. They love it. A lot of retired nurses, retired doctors of our county and, I mean, it's been wonderful to see that collaboration between them and working with us.
So, what's the next plan for the homeless situation on that? I know a lot of places we're talking about trying to administer the Johnson, Johnson, the single dose to, because it makes it a lot easier for the homelessness.
Yes.
Because of that issue of being able to get them to be able to come in to do the second shot.
Yes. So, we have talked about that. We have talked, you know, how we're gonna go out and meet them where they are, basically. What does that look like? We are hoping that we do get Johnson, Johnson for that very reason. So, we have our fingers crossed, you know, we keep requesting it and it may come, but we can know that once we have it, that's probably where we're gonna utilize it. The other place to utilize that would be in the inmate population, right? Because they come and go constantly, right? So, we, we have done great strides there. That medical staff that's vaccinated as many as they could right from the beginning. And then those that come in, it's, you know, they're being offered it, depending on how long they stay. But if they leave early, there's no, nothing for them to come back. They're not gonna go out to jail and get it.
Hope not.
But they could go to one of the clinics and, and have that second shot.
But even with the first shot, it's my understanding that with Moderna and Pfizer, isn't it like in the 90s?
It's an 80%.
80%.
Yeah. The efficacy is in the 80s of those. That definitely boosts up your immune system more by getting the second shot.
So, as of right now, though, the homeless situation, there's not a definite game plan for that one yet?
Not a definite game plan. Definitely Sarah Clark and I've had those discussions and Madeline, which is their new homeless housing coordinator.
She's awesome.
Yes, so we have had those discussions, trying to figure it out, especially we need to get that one shot vaccine in our hands.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be the key thing there. Once that's opened up, then we can make a game plan.
Yes.
That's something we can do, that's something we can do too with the homeless escalation that we're doing. In fact, we have a meeting tomorrow, but to be able to, you know, announce that and get that going would be a huge thing, which.
Yes, absolutely. And like I was gonna say, is that we can utilize our new mobile clinic, you know, the van that we're gonna have, to be able to roll that out to where we need to go to vaccinate as many as we can.
Yeah, that's great. I just had a question about the kids. So, when do you foresee that we will be able to get the schools and the children vaccinated?
So, they're opening it up 16 and above. Yes, right now. Now, April 15th, it's opened up to 16 years old and above.
And above, but what about under?
So, as of right now, they're still working on vaccines for the younger population.
Okay, yeah, I understand that it's new variant and I'm not sure, is it the UK variant that they're saying?
There's several variants.
That's impacting the younger, the kids.
Yeah. There are several variants out there, so.
Thank you so much, Shelley.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. So, just one clarification. If so, if people are listening, you're not discouraging the one shot for the Johnson, Johnson, correct?
Absolutely not.
Just because of those, because, you know, I guess it's everybody's personal choice or doctor's opinion.
Yep.
My personal doctor recommended that I get the Johnson, Johnson along with my parents. So, that's his personal conversation you have to have with your.
Yes.
Physician, I think, but I think, you know, I encourage anybody to get any shots available to them.
Yes. And I don't want to discourage people either and say, hey, you can just get one Pfizer shot. And really, you can't. You need both Pfizer shots.
Yeah.
So, they are manufactured differently. So, the one shot. The one shot is good for Johnson and Johnson. Absolutely.
I just wanted to clarify that for people listening.
It does make sense that there is a specialized application for one shot. And like all of us could get, I mean, we could get a two-shot, but there are people, like we say homeless, I encourage the population where you wouldn't want to do a one-shot. So, I can see, I hadn't thought about that. I can see where Shelley's coming from on that.
Every turn of them.
As far as the state looking at that, though, it doesn't really matter then. We're doing the Johnson, Johnson, one shot that we're still counting, right?
Yep.
That's all I want, that's kind of all I want to hear.
Yep, still counted.
Great.
Perfect, perfect.
Great. Thank you for all the work that public health is doing on behalf of our county.
Yes, a lot of times.
You've been a busy lady the last year.
Tell your husband he'll be able to see you in a year, so.
Yeah, she's got him off of projects.
Okay, so we'll move on now to number nine.
Yeah, two, or nine was two. So, first of all, I want to join the council and thank Shelley. You and the team have done a great job out there. Really appreciate that. I would encourage you to continue this urgency ordinance until emergency is over and it's not yet. So, we'll keep that in place. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that we did talk before, as we go down from purple to red to now orange, we would be looking at some of our facilities to see whether or not we could start doing things like taking reservations and for when. We still need to look at the cleaning protocols that need to be in place that. But I think that those are maybe, yeah, certainly we will be looking at that. I just wanted to let you know that we are doing that also.
So, Steve, if I may, so reservations for the community center, community theater and the park? Is that what you mean by reservation?
That's what we'll be looking at. And earlier tonight, actually before the meeting started, we had a citizen approach about wanting to do reservations in the park. Although, the interesting thing was it was so that people wouldn't trash them.
Well, and now the CDC today has said that as far as the cleaning goes, you have, it's at least a one in 10,000th chance of getting, it's not near as bad as it was. I know because they're cleaning the subways every night and, and they're not doing that. They're going back there where my daughter lives to clean the subways like every three or four days. Doesn't matter if they're still dirty.
Okay, well, that's not exactly the standard.
No, 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 no.
But anyway, we will have to, to look at it. It may not be very much more than what we had to do in the past, but that is something that we need to look at.
Yeah, definitely. Is that something needs to be put on for discussion at a further meeting then or?
I think what, what we'll do is we'll, we'll come up and we'll talk to staff and we'll see what we can.
Cover the recommendation.
And then will you come up with a recommendation or if we decide just to start doing it again if it's, if it's not like this is a, 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 a target.
Yeah, we've only, we've only dropped today anyway, so today's our first day.
Yeah, and there's still restrictions on, on, you know, getting, for example, is, I don't remember what the theater is and Shelley looks up things all day, so I'm not gonna ask her. Have to look it up, but. What's that?
Well, she just said it can't be over 100. That's the max and that theater.
That's for, that's for restaurants.
Yeah, that's restaurant.
Yeah.
No, that was, that's, the theater's 350.
It's 350 for theaters that have 100. No, no space amounts.
No, there would be kind of like movie theaters, I don't know whether you have 50% capacity or 200. And I think when I was talking with Paul, I think I was doing one for red and not the orange. So, the orange for restaurants was open indoors with modifications, maximum 50% capacity.
Okay. Oh, good.
So, for example, right now, I think we have about 300 seats and I don't remember.
350, 349, something like that. So, half would be 150.
Well.
Okay.
Yeah.
And actually, that's, we, it's interesting. Maybe something will start up again. That's gonna take people a while to.
So, the city manager says he'll bring us back a recommendation in two weeks and I think, is that sufficient?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can, you know, if it's open, I think that we should.
Have a good night.
I'll make the motion to, for the continuation of urgency order number 855. That's Paul McCoy.
I'll second that motion. Assistant Johnson Freeman. I'll second that motion, Mrs. Jones, Mr. Freeman.
We have a motion and a second. Would you do a call, please, Mr. Baker?
Mayor for Tim Bear.
Hi.
City Council member Freeman.
Hi.
City Council member McFarrel.
Hi.
City Council member Middleton.
Hi.
Mayor King.
Hi, okay. Continue on.
I still have to have a list to do it now.
Yeah. I might now we're at number two of this. Discuss possible action consent calendars, calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion unless the. Any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion, or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. City manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval of application. Payments issued from March eighth, twenty twenty-one through March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. B, approval of minutes of the meeting held March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. C, acceptance of treasury report and budget of actual. For month of February twenty twenty-one, and D, wave. Full text readings of all ordinance on the agenda ordinance shall be introduced and adopted by title only. I'll go into first, if there's anybody in the audience that has any questions first, before we get the councils.
And I have a question.
Okay.
I just have a question. Um, since I wasn't here for the last meeting because my husband's surgery. Um, I was wondering, do I abstain from item number?
People often do that, technically, technically speaking, that's my report. But it's up to you.
Yeah, I get on, on B, you don't have to, that's right, we had this discussion before. Yeah, as long as you've read through the minutes and you accept the minutes, then it's acceptable. That's right, we've had this discussion before.
Only took you a few minutes.
So I.
Uh, this is Councilor McCoy, I got one.
Oh, sorry, so I just, no, it's, it's, I gotta, I gotta accuse myself of one or two A on this, unfortunately, so.
A?
Yes.
And where do we put that for the reading?
Um, personal, um, um, I have a renter that actually is on that budget part of that, so.
Oh.
Does that impact you yet?
Yeah, it's a conflict of interest on that, since I have something that's winning and we made a payment.
Possible personal gain.
This is Councilor McCoy. And I'd like to make a motion, we accept the count the consent calendar has listed.
Public Middleton, I will second. Motion is second. Mr. Baker?
So um, let the record show that uh, the mayor is abstaining on item two A.
And I'll abstain on item two B.
And uh, the customer Freeman is abstaining on item two D.
So do we need to split it up into three motions?
With that, with those extensions, um. We'll go ahead and do the roll call. Mayor for Tim Bear.
Hi.
Council member Freeman.
Hi.
Councilor McCoy.
Hi.
Councilor Middleton.
Hi.
Mayor King.
Hi. Alright.
And that's, that's the eyes with the extensions on.
Correct.
On two and three.
A and two B.
Yeah, my two A and she's two B.
Okay, two B and not two.
Two B.
I made this gap with the.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Alright, we move on to number three, discuss possible action, approve the transportation claim for the FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one local transportation fund. And authorize the mayor to sign the claim on behalf of the city, and this one is Cindy.
Hello. Oh. Can anyone hear me?
I can.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know about the rest of the world.
Sometimes Paul and I can't hear.
Yeah, it's harder to hear over here, it's over here, we can't hear if it's not close to you.
I'm, I'm not sure about that, but I am vertically challenged. Alright, can everyone hear me?
Yeah. Russ, you have to speak right into it, so Paul and I, for some reason, doesn't come this way.
How close do I need to be here?
Right there.
Right here? Okay, here we go.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, before you, this item. Is our yearly local transportation fund allocation. We get it through the LTC. As you know, the county gets a quarter out of each seven twenty-five of state sales tax collected from the county. Most of the use of funds is for public transit. But tiny counties like ours are allocated a portion of the funds for streets and roads. And the city council is required to approve the attached transportation claim, and the mayor. Is required to sign it before the LTC will consider it for approval. And that item's in front of you, the letter is there.
And if opposed to, we would pay by a second, is there a problem that today's?
I, I did speak with Stephanie about this, and they're gonna accept it, it's fine. And if you have questions, feel free to ask, otherwise, I defer to.
This is good funding for us for those.
So much needed.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve, or should I, since I'm on the LTC?
Make it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion uh, to approve. To approve the uh, uh, transportation plan for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one local transportation fund and authorize the mayor to sign the claim on behalf of the city.
Councilperson, I will second. Sorry. Let's have an arm wrestle match over here.
That's good.
We have a motion and a second.
Mayor for Tim Bear.
Hi.
City Council member Freeman.
Hi.
City Council member McCoy.
Hi.
City Council member Middleton.
Hi.
Mayor King.
Hi, alrighty.
Mine is always good.
Yes. Now, we need, we need all we can get, that's for North.
That's why I'm anxious to get right on that.
Yeah, we definitely need to jump on that, yeah, thank you, Cindy. Alright, we'll move on to number four, then discuss possible action. Hold a virtual public hearing for the CDVG. FY twenty twenty-one. At NOFA, dated January ninth, twenty ninth, twenty twenty-one regarding the following project planning grant. New fire station for the White and Volunteer Fire Department. Alrighty.
Alright.
Back up again.
Here I am, let me see.
People that don't know what a NOFA is, it's a notice of unavailability.
Right. We get one every year.
Something we should state.
Well, it's in, it's in the. It's in the actual body of the. True. Right.
And if that's the case, it's community development block grant is the CDVG.
And.
Go ahead, Cindy, sorry.
Please feel free. Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you're aware, because you were there. On March sixteenth, we held an initial public meeting to gather public comment and input regarding what sort of projects we would want to. Submit for applications for the CDVG program for this year. And there were several. Different ideas. I've given Mr. Baker a script to read after the public meeting or public hearing begins, so. He can go through all of the ideas. We've done some. Research about all the homeless issues, and we're thinking a public workshop might be the best venue to discuss those. However, it's staff's and city manager's idea to. Name uh, the prod, the, a planning grant for the new fire station. As the project to submit for this grant cycle. One reason being that the application needs to be in by April thirtieth. The maximum funding allocation for that would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would go quite a way to getting. That planning work done for a new fire station if we got the grant. And. At this point, I don't believe I have any more to say unless you have questions before you wanna open the public.
Does that count off questions before I open up to the public?
Well, I, I actually like to give a list. You said that there's a list of.
It's.
Possible, but I'm saying that the, the, sorry department is not.
No, no, Mr. Baker has that.
Um, just to keep the, the order, if we could open the public hearing so that we don't forget it. And then I'll, I'll, I'll read through that.
Alright, well, now open this meeting up to the public.
Okay, so I'm reading this script, go for it. So um. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide citizens with pertinent information about the community development block grant program. And to allow discussion of the city's proposed application in this fiscal year's funding cycle. Any grant money received must be spent on projects benefiting primarily low and minority ten persons. The city is expected to receive about five thousand dollars of the programming spent for this program here. The public notice has been published in English and Spanish. And as part of the council agenda package, it was requested to be included in the minutes, as we were meeting. Uh, on March sixteenth, you held a public meeting to discuss potential applications. And those, some of the ideas that came up during that meeting were housing for seniors, housing. Didn't, specifically housing rehab program. Relocations, help and help with evictions. Uh, homeless help and affordable housing. Trash cans and porta potties on the greenway. First time home buyer assistance, the fire station plan. As noticed in the staff report, the city is planning to apply for CCG non-housing. Plan, so that was the list. What are you asking me? Uh, so he's playing the high, apply for a CCG non-housing planning grant in two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, which falls under the low mod income national objective because of our demographics. Um, and this includes applying work and studies for the fire station. If anyone has questions, comments, or suggestions during the hearing. Um, should identify themselves by name before they speak. Uh, they don't actually have to, but we would appreciate if they did. And we will include your names in the minutes if you'd like to. Be able to specifically respond to your questions and comments during the hearing. At this point, uh, there's one or two things that we could do. Um, my suggestion is probably to let the public comments come in, and then after that, I'd like to talk about. The uh, work that we did to. See whether there was a, a nonprofit agency ready to do some of the projects that came up at the last meeting, so. If you go either way, but probably let the public first.
Yeah, I, I agree, let's, it's open up to the public, so Arthur, is there? Anybody that have some public comments on this issue?
I see no public comment at this time. Can I ask one more time? And see.
Yeah. One more time, is there any members of the public that would like to speak on this issue?
As a reminder, please press star nine.
Star nine, yes.
Or you can right click the profile to digitally register. Those any public comments at this time.
Okay, and I will close it to the public and open up to you, Mr. Baker.
So we contacted a, a few entities to kind of. Check in to see whether there was anyone preparing these type of applications for. This funding cycle because of the very short timeline. And so we talked to Great Northern, we talked to uh, the Wairega Family Resource Center, and then we also contacted. I call them the, the local, uh, it's basically Madeline Bryan, who's the local contact for the. Uh, North County. Yeah, that's the homeless thing, so. So Great Northern, um. None of, not, no one could, could act on the short of the timeline and put together credible applications and develop the program to be ready. Um, some of these programs are, are actually tricky to do under the CDVG program. Um, anyway, we need to look and see what they were doing, so. Uh, Great Northern, uh, has in the past done housing rehab. And uh, they, they do some portfolio management for the city of Doris. They haven't really done a, a lot of first time home buyer programs, and one thing to know about first time home buyer programs is. They sound great, but with the CDVG income levels. It's hard to both qualify for the CDVG program. And also have enough money to buy a house even here. So there's a fairly narrow, you know, if you're a fifty percent of median income. It probably isn't gonna work, but the closer you get to the. I believe a thirty percent still is gonna last since I checked on that, but anyway, so. So that's a, a little bit of, it, it, there'd have to be some analysis to see. How narrow that is, um. To see whether it would uh, work or not. They did point out that there has been because of the Slater fire in particular in our county, although we've also seen. People coming from other fires as well, but that's the, that's kind of the big one down river. And um. So anyway, they would be willing to uh, work with us, but the suggestion that we kind of mutually came up with was to. Have, as, as Cindy mentioned, a meeting. Uh, a lot earlier in the process, like summer of twenty-one for the twenty-two cycle. And then see, kind of like what we did for the, the fire planning, so we started talking about it. Uh, the better, you know, at least six months, better part of the year ahead of time.
So did we just find out about this? Is that why there's no? That no one's prepared? Did we just find out about the CDVG round? Is that what happened?
Um, no, it's, it, there's a, there's a, as uh, as Lori pointed out the last time. There's a funding cycle. On every year, it varies a little bit in terms of when the applications are due. Depending on what's, uh, what's happening. In the past, um, we used to, when I first got here, we're doing a lot of community development block grant program applications. We found that we were spending an inordinate amount of time. Working with HCB and the problems that they had with the CDVG program, so we stopped applying. Um, because it, it, it wasn't, it wasn't worth it. Now, the, what thing has happened is that we are now a. Uh, I can't remember the term for CDVG is underserved, or under. Basically, our whole city. A majority of the population is within the income range. Therefore, we can do things that are broadens, like the taxation, for example, which. Back when I was doing the CDVG program. I mentioned, remember years ago? Was not an ideal project, for example, but now, uh, they're, they're doing that, so. Um, but these are the kind of things that if you're trying to put it in the motion, it sounds like a great idea. But you need to have enough time to do that. And so that's what we're looking at.
No, don't worry, it's, how do they call that? Let's see, it has to be shovel ready, in other words, it's gotta be ready to go.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we do shovel in the.
No, I know.
But the, but the equivalent of that. Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilman Devin. Devin. Be buried. If I understand, if I understood, um. Lori, Laura? Correctly, it was two meetings ago that she said the city was informed of the funds available in January.
Okay, so we just need to be more prompt, we need to be ready.
And we have staff, more staffing available to.
Yeah, to be able to follow through on.
Yes.
Well, the other thing is that I want you all to remember. That, and we did have dropped this, our grant policy, although now that I think about it, it was before any of you were in council. Um, we used to apply for grants just to bring money into the, the city. And what we established with that grant policy was to make sure that what we were applying for. Was actually a priority of the city. And that's where we slowed down, so some of these things may sound like great ideas, but they may turn out to be unusable to administer. Um, particularly, you know, there was a discussion about some of the homeless thing, but. You had to make sure that you could figure out how to use the homeless funds inside the city of Wairega, in other words. Not my view, not, not to. You know, things south of us that are in the inappropriate area, so. I, I wanna make sure that there's an understanding that you need to plan ahead, but you also. Are not going to do all of these things, because some of them will turn out to be unusable, some of them will. Turn out not to have a nonprofit sponsor that's willing to take it on. And then at some point, you gotta choose the priorities. We've, we've chosen the fire station as the number one priority. But I think we can look at some of these other things in the, in the future. And January is too late.
Okay.
We need, January is too late. Yeah, we need to be prepared before January time comes around.
Right.
Knowing, knowing ahead, so in other words, if, if we know in January that this is coming up again.
Right.
Then we need to be actually prepared for it now.
This summer.
Start planning.
Well, it's during the summer.
At least by August.
Start looking at that, start interacting with the nonprofits that will administer these programs. On our behalf, because it's not really realistic to. There's someone over my left shoulder.
Yeah.
But also, I think the homelessness, I think that the county was looking at putting together. That in places like Home thing on the corner, and they were looking for us to, I think, help with that. You know better than me.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna let the person behind my left.
Yes, right.
Sorry.
I just wanted to mention that last year on the funding cycle, we went for three million, three point five million. That we're still waiting funding decision on, we're the next in line to get funding after Marysville. We're the next one, so that's an over the counter construction grant for Highway. Three, um, and we got that in last February. Uh, we also had a window to work, and we got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars CDVG planning grant. For the Carnegie Wyper last May.
Outcome of those discussions was, we need to do something for the fire station, and that started last August.
So, I mean, and that took a while to how are we gonna do it, what resources are we gonna use, and that kind of happened all through the fall when. And, you know, our heating out for some assistive services, so. So truly, our window is the summer, looking at, you know, when that. I call it the cycle comes around for refunding, don't worry. In addition, um, really to give credit to Cindy. Um, we've been navigating the H C D C B one, two, and three funding, um. And that's just an overlay you didn't expect, and I'm sure Quentin can tell some good stories. Um, of of kind of, you know, the elaborate of. You know, a consortium contract on that and giving H C D um behind that because they hadn't seen or done that. And actually, again, Siski Towning kind of led the way. I, um, on on that collaboration, we were, we were there at the table. And they, we came in in February to Denver. Um, and so. You know, I'm not, I just feel like, you know, we really got now this summer, that window of Stevenson workshops. And kind of going out there, really be ready for that grant, it's next February.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, Quentin did talk to us, remember, for me to see.
Oh, yeah.
And he talked about how complicated it was with all the different, uh. So good funding levels.
Something we just need to keep working on and moving on.
Yes, thank you, man.
Yes, thank you. So is there any other discussion in this? It's fine, council.
I I just want to also mention that the family resource is anyway, we talked to them, and we were talking specifically about. The interaction of homeless services. They also were interested in talking about some of the things they are doing. Uh, they have some uh street outreach where they've gotten some money. One of the interesting things that they did was that they were. Asked to apply for two different grants. And they chose one. And the reason they did that was they wanted to make sure that they could develop the capacity. And then also to do a good job, and. They might have been able to do two, I think that they have a lot of organizational capacity, but they were very specific on wanting to make sure that. They did what they could do a good job at.
Yep.
So I I just wanted to pass that one as a. Sort of so that. It 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 sounds like that there'd always be someone to do something, but they have considerations too about what their priorities are.
Same with them, they only have a certain amount of staffing to do, certain amount of things too. That's uh drains their staffing now too. They go and do somewhat, period.
And and then the other thing is that, uh, when we did talk to Madeline Bryant, I don't believe I have met this person, but. Who really saved on the water. Um, also talked about the the county. She talked about a lot of different uh programs that the county had, but also the. I don't remember what the acronym stands for, but I know housing is in there at rural. But the R C H C D uh nonprofit has applied for. Um, funding for the supportive housing up on uh Foothill. I do know that they are working on different financing uh things because they work with. Liz on our staff to get some of the planning approvals um out of the way and some of the information. Anyway, just wanted to follow up on that.
Yeah, she's been, Madeline's been working really hard on this. She's just stepped in this position here a couple of months ago, and. Few months ago, it is now, and she's, she's real sharp, real sharp young gal, and just a little bit on top of it, so she's. Really impressive. She's been a real valuable asset to the homelessness community too, so she's jumped right in there. Lost a one of our key players, she stepped in there, she's taken the role on, doing a good job. Boys. Um, okay, is there any other discussion, my council?
So today I asked the uh. The recommended motion is to hold a virtual public hearing, isn't that what we're doing right now?
Yeah, just there.
So.
So you're going to see the fire station planning. And that will be for approval, it isn't a. Right, 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 a resolution, um, so it really isn't going to be. Uh, yet another public hearing, there's a lot of public participation. In this C D G program, and as we mentioned to you, we want to start it even though.
But it will not be a public discussion.
But other than a normal project.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
No. I don't think, I don't think so.
No, no, that's, that's a public hearing.
Just move on to number five then. Special possible action, adopt the resolution of the city council of the city of Wairega, updating the city's development impact fee phased and implementation plan. It's going to be. Kind of like come on down.
Yeah, right.
So, wow, we've had a workshop, we've had, um. Um, met with finance community, we're able to have workshop, and they came to kind of push some direction on the development impact fees. And so, um, following that direction, we bring back. Um, resolutions, agencies, fees, um, to the hundred percent, and that's what we're asking you to consider this evening. Um, we, um, the ordinance allows for a doc, or calls for modifications to the base in schedule five resolution. And so, and on by. Adapting this resolution, it would mean six months from adoption, this would be effective to develop those subject to these fees. Um, so that would be like October sixth or so. Um, that they would go into the, um. The face in, um, tiers, and, um. So with that, I know we've, um, had discussions on this, if we want to go into the work, it's all right, I'm happy to. On that, but, um. That's it for the resolution, we offer these, um, we need to. Um, accrete them to seventy five percent full rate, um, seventy five percent in six months. And then a hundred percent within twelve months of adoption. If there's any questions, I can take them, otherwise.
Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at the, at, at, at what, um. Um, Ms. Hogan has brought us, and she's, she, she gives us the institutional. Amount that was collected under the previous, under the current. Uh, modified, you know, we get, uh. Collection, because we collect less than the state says we can collect. She gives us the residential and the commercial on that, that's. So far, it's been one, almost one point one million, just under it. And then the discount that we have given to institutional, residential, and commercial. Uh, property holders is one point. Three million, almost one point four million. So we've lost one, about one point four million in revenue. Now. I know that the worry always is that, you know, where the the residents, the person who's putting up a house, you know, they're paying a lot of fees, I understand that. And, you know, we've talked about this based on what we know in different counties, where, uh, Sess County. I talked about, uh, San Diego County just for a remodel, you know, twenty five thousand dollars in permits. But, um, you know, it it would appear two hundred fifty three thousand dollars was lost or discounted to. Uh, persons or person trying to build a home that that i- in. Wairega, that is, uh, just barely. Uh, ten percent of the total revenue that we would have collected, so. I I understand that that we we do want to help the residential. Um, and we don't, you know, we we're not out to stick it to anybody, but. It would seem that it's a very, very minor, that's not the reason people aren't building here.
Right, exactly.
You know, and we're still seeing corporate come in here. And they're going to come in, and, you know, whether we like it or not, because we want to see mom and pops come in here. We we don't, we'd love to see mom and pops. I think they said that moving the All-Star game out of Atlanta was going to hurt something like twenty three thousand mom and pop businesses. Most of them minorities, blacks. Um, and and so, I mean, that's an aside, but the thing is, we want to see our mom and pops. But if these big corporations are going to come in. They're also used to paying this. They, and 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 they even sometimes will say, wait, that's all, you know, and so I, I I feel like we need to collect that, so. I I am in favor of instituting this as, as. Uh, Reda Hogan has listed it for us in our last meeting and again in this meeting. I just want to, I just want to make that clear, I won't make a motion. Until one is needed, yeah, until one is needed, but I want to make that clear.
I I I want to make a comment out of this, I'll be, you know. I'm looking at it in in favor too, but I also want to, um. State too. That as a a personal homeowner or somebody wanting to build a home. And these fees are there, obviously, and whatnot, they can come to the planning commission and basically request. Uh, that to be reduced, correct?
Um, they would come to the building department.
Correct. But that can, that is something, I just want that stated, so that people know that there is, can, there can be. For special reasons, maybe, but there can be those variants that can be brought to the city council too.
Well, I'm not sure I understand what you're.
So in other words, if there's.
You're not going to be negotiable. Is that what you're saying?
Well, we, one of the things that we have done, you know, in the past, is provide for in. Um, and the ordinance is to refer until. Some later date, in other words, not, you know, we can, with, with a request. I really agree on that, they can do, so that if it's a big upfront cost, then probably want to refer, they can do. Is that what you're referring to?
No, not necessarily, the, we, we as a council can also say that we can give a, a, a. That variance to that particular situation too. As, as we have in the past.
Well, yeah, we have done that.
Yes, I just want that stated because that's.
A hardship case.
There are special reasons that we can, that we can do that as a council. And.
What would that be? I just wanted to hear.
Well, there were only two times where, well, first of all. You did the, the, not you, but the previous council did the big one, which is that. To delay the full implementation, so that, right. Um, and and that's why we are where we are. There also was, um, a time period where, uh, council members felt that. Because the residential market was so dormant that. We should try to do anything that we could to do that, and. I can't remember the name of the program, but we allowed up to five. Homes to be, um. To full prevent through an outpaying the development impact fee. And all that too did.
Yes.
One of them was on purpose because they knew about the policy, and the other one came in, uh, almost at the end of the program, we had to work really hard to get them. That it best, so that was sort of where we found out that that wasn't the driving force of that. And then the other situation that we're aware that's been done is. In, uh, with the homeless shelter.
Yes, that's, I guess that's.
Um, provide, I believe it was up to five thousand.
Up to five thousand.
If they remember. Um, of the the development impact fees. Now, there are interpretations. Where there are certain things going on, for, for example, we brought to you the, um. Development impact fees on the, uh. The courthouse site.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and whether to extend that, and that was a decision where they went the other, so there is some of that. Uh, but I want to caution you in terms of. There's not, there, it it has to be kind of a special.
Yeah, I I just want, I, yeah, I totally understand that. I just want that to, as a council to be fully aware of, that there is special, special things that can be brought up. For special occasions or special whatever you want to call it, um, the restrictions that can be lifted and. That can be done if if needed to be for special situations.
I I only wish. That the reason people weren't building is because of our fees.
Right.
But it's not, it's because of sprinklers, it's because of solar, it's because you have to electric car plug in now in a new, it's the, our, our government. Our government has priced. Homes, uh, for the person making less than four or five hundred thousand dollars. A year, our our state government has priced, um, these people, we've played price solid business.
Yeah, absolutely.
Out of being able to build a new home, that's why everybody buys old homes or remodels.
Yep.
I I wish I wouldn't, couldn't say that, but.
Actually, the manufacturer, actually manufactured home businesses, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Most people now are building land here.
An example of the restrictions.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
They're backstabbing on clients waiting a year to get their manufactured home, but on, uh, it's a property, yeah, they're boom.
They don't have the restrictions.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I understand what you're saying, what the city manager is saying. I do understand that it would have to be, I mean, like, if I came to you in ten years and and Corey was the mayor and I said, hey, I'm building this. Four, five hundred thousand dollar, you know, thing up on, you know, Grizzly Court, Corey, I want you to, to, um. I want you to waive half the fees. I hope that Corey would say, you know, you're full of snot. And yeah, leave, because I'm not going to deal with that. Because, you know, that, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. Especially.
Special circumstances does not mean favoritism.
Yes.
A big difference.
Absolutely.
And sometimes special, special, and I I won't mention here, but sometime they can come, because it didn't happen on any of our watches at this point in time. Special service, special things can come at the bite you later, you know, oh, why did I do that, you know?
Like I said, the last one, and make, you know, Steve made a point, the last time we did this was for the beacon of hope. And this is to bring, that was a special. Thing because we're trying to get, take care of the homelessness problem in Wairega, and that was to help that problem out. And there's still, as you know.
Well, I I understood, understood.
Forward, so hopefully that.
And they're a non, and they're a nonprofit trying to gather.
And as a non-councilman.
That's different, that's a different. Someone with a million dollars.
Not having been on the council at that time. I would say that Steve and Reda and Cindy and all everybody in that office at the time. Was very, very generous, not only with their time, not only with with.
Oh, I was.
Giving a little bit of help there, but with their attitude, because. I'll just say that they had very positive attitudes toward the public during that time.
Yep.
I know they did.
No, I agree, no, I just, I just want rest of the council, because, you know, Corey wasn't on council at that point in time. And, you know, and neither was Paul, actually.
No, I wouldn't either.
Time either, no. He's obviously been involved in that, so he knew about those circumstances, and I just want the rest of the council to be aware of that too, that there is special. Situations that we could do that, would it ever happen? I'm not.
Yeah, and the unique code really, um, sets the groundwork of what you can and can't do in that area of, and that's many code, one, three, point one three. So it's not wide open.
No.
It really is, there's kind of the groundwork that you just kind of operate within that. Um, for exemption, three months credits for all of the reverse when agreements in the fields. So, um, yeah, it's, it's pretty well.
Oh, right, no. Very much so. Okay, any other questions? Okay, public comment, great.
Excuse me.
Yeah, this is Laura Edzilow. Uh, you can talk around in circles all you want, but this will increase the cost of building new homes in Wairega. And it's making the affordable housing situation that much worse.
Quite well, quite well, hey, Lorenzo, yeah, unfortunately, the the point needs to be brought to our our governor and and the up the up levels because. The building restrictions, because I'm in the building. And I, that's what I do for a living, and the problem lies on, most of this lies on. The restrictions and the the qual, or the things that we have to do to build a house nowadays. The, uh, fire suppression systems, um, jacks up.
Yeah. Yes, but you don't have to make it that much worse.
Yep, uh, and and if we had the numbers to to agree with it, we would be, we'd be having a different conversation, but yes. I totally understand. Thank you.
This is Paul, oh, you had, you've got, you got me out of the field, sorry. You're still public comment.
Yes, is there any other public comment out there?
I've seen none at this time.
All right, thank you. Okay, any councilmen's?
Yeah, this is Paul McCoy, I'm going to make a motion. That we adopt a resolution of the city council of. The city of Wairega, updating the city's development impact fee phased in implementation plan.
Councilman Middleton, I will second the motion. Motion is second. Mr. Baker?
Here for Tim Bear.
Aye.
Does he count for number three? Does he count for number four?
Aye.
Does he count for number one?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye, all right. Thank you, Reda. Thank you.
Thank you, Reda.
Oh, the next one's hers too.
That's my.
Okay.
The tag team, okay, number six. Discussion possible action, adopt the resolution, the city of, of, since, excuse me, by the city council of the city of Wairega. Establishing an advanced hire policy. And this is something that actually Steve brought up to us, and it's, and I like the idea, so thank you, and Reda, I don't know who wants to start off with this one.
I'm going to let Steve, I believe.
So, uh, mayor, members of the council, we've, have had extensive discussions about the. Need for succession planning, cross training, filling vacancies. And the difficulty of of doing that in, uh, the current. Environment, and, uh, so we were talking about different ways to do it, we we brought some positions to. On ad hoc basis, one at a time, to say, this is why we need to to fill this position. But as we've thought about it, we think that an advanced hire policy would work better. And this really is that we know there are some upcoming data streams. Uh, people have told us that they're going to retire or or some other reason. And so, to try to get ahead of that so that we could begin recruiting. Hopefully, at some point, uh, there might be the ability to have overlap between the new hires. Uh, and the the person leaving, uh, for cross training. That probably won't happen all the time, because that's, uh, that would be an unusually long period of time in some cases. But it will also allow us to shorten the amount of time that that position is vacant. And as you know, with our demographics and so on, we're expecting some. And as you know, with our demographics and so on, we're expecting some, some vacancies. So this is a policy that we thought would move forward. We often have, um, salary savings as a result of, of different things that, that help us be revenue neutral, but in any event, it helps us get to, to as much as possible, keep the work that we're creating going without causing a great disruption. So I, I don't know if I run the lot through the, uh, we'd be happy to answer questions though.
No, I just, I just want to say thank you for addressing this because this has been the council's concern for a long time. And this now puts it in an established form that we can actually now move forward and be, uh, feel a little bit more at ease as a council, I know, and knowing, you know, that we're doing something for our citizens, knowing that we're going to keep on the ball and be on top of all this stuff and, and be able to hopefully, you know, do the service that we need to do for the, for the public. So, no, I, I like this idea. When you come up, when you talked about this, it was like, oh, wow, this is great how we can actually move forward on stuff timely fashions where we don't get caught in, um, in, uh, bad terms and, and, uh, it's, what, what they say, get caught with your pants down.
I'd like to say getting people trained.
Yes.
Yeah, we're not using the pants idea. I, I did, I did want to mention, because I don't think I mentioned it when I talked about it, was that we're going to let you know when we do this.
Yeah.
So it would be one of those, we'll, we'll let you know. And then we also looked at, um, I think Rheta was, you, you found the example of this from a city, you know, another, actually it was in another state. Uh, but that they had done something similar.
Oh, wow.
Or very similar kinds of, of reasons.
No lapses of service.
No.
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, less lapses.
Well, there's, there's key, key players in our, in our city that we can't get, you know, get caught without having them. And that's, that's the key thing, you know, that you just can't, you can't find certain, uh, people overnight on certain, uh, job titles, so.
Correct. There are some that are much more difficult to recruit. And, uh, I will say that the, the managers of those departments, when we brought up this advance, um, our thing we're saying, that would be great because then that helps me out and, and they could go into a myriad of ways of treating me then.
Like you're, you're talking, you know, wastewater and water, you know, water plant and all that sort of, all those things. I noticed that, uh, Oregon, they had an ad in, on the Oregon channel that they were looking for a wastewater technician or something too. I can't remember what it was, but they're, they're, they're looking for stuff out there too. So that's, these are key players, you know, that we need always to have and, and keep on top of. So it's, it's all over across the, probably the United States, these certain positions are probably not the easiest to fill in some, some places.
Sure, and we as much as possible don't match in the positions with other cities, so.
Right. Exactly, that's, exactly. So, uh, council, have any other questions?
No, I have a motion.
Okay.
And it's different, this motion here is very convoluted, so I'm going to change it a little bit.
At the agenda title is?
No, when you look on the next page, it says recommendations. At the city council, at the city of Wairega recommends that, I'm going to say, I would like to recommend that the Wairega City Council recommends implementation of a resolution establishing an advanced hire policy. And then, yeah, you don't have to say advanced hire policy twice. Okay, so to get that.
The agenda title is easier.
We must have corrected it in one place and not the other.
Yeah, so, yeah, the resolution by the city council, I just said, the Wairega City Council recommends implementation of a resolution establishing an advanced hire policy period.
I'll second, this is Debbie.
Motion.
And so I'm, I'm just going to, um, I don't know if the word adopt was in there, we can, we can check it later, but we're looking at adopting that resolution.
Okay, so, Wairega City Council recommends adoption, not implementation.
Yeah.
Adoption of a resolution establishing an advanced hire policy.
Perfect. There you go. That makes it official. Debbie, do you still second it?
No, I'm not in the mood. Yes, I second.
Let's get, we get hold on please.
Mayor for Tim Bear.
Aye.
City Council member Freeman.
Aye.
City Council member McCoy.
Aye.
City Council member Goodwin.
Aye.
Mayor Dave.
Aye, all right, all right, thanks, you guys. I appreciate that. Keeping us, keeping us moving forward, right? All right, number seven, discussion possible action. It's not doing it. Two million dollars to the California Employers Prepaid Pension Trust account for the city pensions liability. Rheta?
This is, uh, yeah, a little confusing, but hopefully in, uh, the House of Finance Committee, and Steve, um, gives some more clarity, then maybe I can make a, a, if I can get the weeds, um, that I get into this stuff. But, um, the city, um, like those cities in California, has a large unfunded liability in its pension file. I think, you know, state national news, California news, and, um, so, and this was, it has been known that it's coming of basically the unfunded liability and that, was it two years ago? They've given us, you know, charts that it's going to get worse before it gets better, and it's getting worse. And, uh, the thing is, is looking at getting ahead of this. And when I say getting ahead of this, that's meaning that act, this acronym, ARC, or the actuarial required contribution. So the city makes its minimum required contribution as billed for CalPERS, but we aren't meeting what the actuaries will say, you should be contributing each year. And we're losing ground on that. And in the staff report, you kind of see, um, where we're losing ground, you're with your audits, which means our unfunded liability is growing for what we are contributing of this ARC or the annual required contribution. And so it's a mess about social feeling, don't you just, for me, and, um, so what we're trying to do is kind of pick up part of what we should have been contributing at least, um. Now, we did set up the CEPP trust in twenty-nine, no, excuse me, it was started the, um, fall of twenty nineteen and in twenty twenty, we took the formal actions to set up the CEPP trust, which is the California Employment Pension, um, Pension Trust Program, and put some money aside from that, and that was one point two million out of the general fund. And, and now we're looking back and, um, need to move more money because what, if I look at, you know, the, um, Corey, you would understand this more than any, you know, in hall, is, is that purse is implicitly charging us their earnings rate of seven percent on this unfunded liability. And I look at all my debt across the city and nothing's at seven percent. But this monster is, that's how they get those earnings, because they're, you know, continually compounding what you owe. Um, and that continues to grow in your liability. So, um, of all of our, um, it's like, I've got money, we've got cash. You look at our cash balances earlier on the agenda, if you want to flip back to that. We do have a lot of cash on hand and it's not working for us. It's not earning anything because we're limited on our investment policy. And so the best place to get our cash working for us is to get it into CalPERS, you can see EPP trust or direct to CalPERS. The only reason I'm not recommending this evening, you'll see me come and probably when we get our, um, as Paul Joe said, we, we need a comprehensive plan to start addressing this. And it will be in that comprehensive plan of how are we going to meet this funding ARC, this annual required contribution? Because, you know, our payroll costs keep going up and then, um, you know, I feel like we're peddling, peddling that this ARC is just growing in front of us. So we're going to have to try to at least keep up with it. We've got to try to keep up with it. And I think that's what we'll, I'll be working on, there's some analysts out there that can help you formulate your, um, comprehensive, um, plan to get ahead of this thing. Um, and I think we do have the cash that we can get ahead of this, um, on this. So what we're looking at tonight is just moving two million into, um, the CEPP trust or you can directly pay it right into CalPERS. And that could be a possible action that we outlined, but, um, we've got to get going on this, um. On there. And the other important thing on this, um, and I just wanted to call out, ready for the audience here, um, what do I have that? Yeah, uh, the deterioration of our position. And so last year, um, was a million. Um, we don't know what this next closing year was. Here, it looks like about six hundred and forty-two thousand. We know with the interest rates so low, or just the discount rate is going to further deteriorate our position. So when, if we did make that contribution directly to CalPERS, it's kind of like, you may think you did, ah, and decreased it by two million. It's like, well, you did, but it grew by three million. So both, your ARC is now higher a million. And so I just want everybody to be on the same page when we move that to understand the mechanics of this because it's like, uh, there are money, we put two million in and still, we still owe, you know, so we need to understand that. But this is a common phenomenon happening with the cities. Um, cities are waking up and trying to get this aggressively money because, you know, CalPERS doesn't say, oh, I'm paying on your ARC, we're charging you seven percent. Um, but, um, you know, this is kind of like, not really called out, but, um, cities are, are trying to get ahead of this. I think, um, we had a similar phenomenon in two thousand five where they measured a side fund before they mega pulled. Um, and what that was is they threw all the pension plans of small agencies together and it became the medical. They took a measurement in two thousand five and said, this is your value, you have to pay up. And, um, well, back in two thousand five, um, again, worked with the finance committee and we self-funded that medical at our own rates, um, rather than at the CalPERS seven percent rate. And guess what? We paid that thing down by twenty sixteen. And from two thousand five to twenty sixteen, which made us not as bad as other cities. And so what happened when this, I, I think you may remember when this phenomenon came up, that side fund it was paying off, it just kind of, it smoothed us a little bit. So we didn't shock quite as hard as the other cities because what we were paying with the side funds, we internally paid it up, went, um, into that rate increase. And so it doesn't shock us quite as hard as other cities did. Um, but, um, I think we can get ahead of it. It's just going to be a disciplined approach. I remember in twenty, um, Steve, what was that, when we set up our local trust in sixteen? I believe it was.
I think we're in teens.
Teen, yeah, twenty sixteen. Um, we set up our local trust, they said, hey, you owe one point seven million. Um, we work, we systematically set up our service trust, we've been making the ARC. And it's turned around. We're going to go there. And so that's even though those contributions will taper down, which means again, we can ramp up and get this pension under control. Um, it is that, it is the obligation of the city. Um, and, um, you know, back in the day, I didn't collect enough, you know, there's a lot of reasons that I can take any of y'all on that crosswalk, but I think, um, most of you are familiar with it, you know, um, on that of kind of things that changed, and I mentioned that a little bit in staff reports, was mortality rates, um, on individuals, you know, market, um, dynamics that weren't, you know, organization gains and loss and, and, um, their expected earnings didn't meet, you know, their objectives because in two thousand nine, it kind of turned around. In two thousand, it was a boom economy. So, um, and they expanded pension programs. The city didn't go into the three percent fifty like many other agencies. We actually held the line on that. Um, and, um, so, you know, a, a lot of credit to the city. It looks bad, it actually can be addressed. It's right now manageable. Um, we just have to start managing it. So with tonight, what we're asking for is consideration to at least move this along. We come back to you looking for the plan of addressing that and putting it on our employment basis.
Thank you, Adam. Keep it on top of everything. That's, I can't, I don't see how you do it. I really don't. It's like, man.
There's really good actuaries that do it and write master reports.
So, council, have any questions, comments?
I, I think this is just the first step.
Yes.
And then a- as Rheta has alluded to, should, you know, putting together, the city will have to put together a very educated, very consistent plan. And we'll try to, try to stick to it as closely as possible, you know, and, but this is the number one issue facing counties, cities, schools and other municipalities, are these unfunded liabilities. And that's what sending them into the B word. We're not, I mean, we're, we're not there, so I'm not even intervening now. But I mean, and the, and these poor counties or cities or school districts that do it, and then, you know, they're digging out for, you know, ten or twelve years. So Rheta's done a real good job of putting this together, in my opinion. Uh, Steve and Rheta did a good job with the finance committee going over it. Um, you know, the, the more I hear it, the more I go, like, when I hear, yeah, well, you put down two dollars because you owe nine, and then all of a sudden they're charging you a dollar interest every month, and all of a sudden, next year, we owe twelve, we only owe seven. You know, so, yeah, so it behooves us to get paid off.
Yeah.
It won't happen overnight.
No.
No.
It's not going to happen overnight, so.
So we can get ahead of this, or at least not.
Not, not as far behind.
It's growing really aggressive.
We can leave us, leave it in better shape than we found it for future councils.
Yeah, that's.
That steps and, and, and keep the, the city solvent.
Yep, absolutely.
That's probably great.
Good.
It's at nine million, if we pay it down to seven million, at least we're that much more ahead.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's seven point one-five percent.
Oh, yeah.
Except, of course, they're not going to say, oh, we're charging that.
I will make the motion to, uh, uh, take action tonight to contribute two million dollars uh, to the California Employers Prepaid Pension at CEPP trust account for the city's pension liability. I'm sorry, I was Paul McCoy that made the, the motion.
All right, we have a motion by Paul McCoy, a second by Joan Smith Freeman, Mr. Baker, we'll follow that.
Mayor for Tim Bear.
Aye.
City Council member Freeman.
Aye.
City Council member McCoy.
Aye.
City Council member Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Dave.
Aye.
All righty, great.
Thank you for all your hard work.
And Steve.
I'll do that.
Yeah, we stepped in the right direction. Thank you, Rheta.
Thank you, Steve, too. Everybody.
Thank Rheta.
A lot of time in that.
We owe Rheta some coffee and sweets.
You notice she didn't say no.
She smiled and nodded.
Yeah.
Let's move on to number eight, discussion possible action, adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Wairega for the employment of a grant fiscal compliance manager and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement regarding such limited term employment together with any and all other necessary documents. Mr. Baker on this one?
Yeah, I think maybe tag teaming this one as well. So this is in response and, and, uh, to some of the needs that we have with, uh, grant compliance. Um, I think we've mentioned over the, well, I think we've mentioned a lot all the time that we have a lot of grants that are, are active. We have project managers on them. We have a lot of money flowing through. And we've been getting, uh, more grants as, as we go along. We are going to present to you a, a, um, quarterly report that will talk about some of those, those grants, because I think that some of them, the names sound similar and so it sounds like the same grant, but, but there's actually, uh, more than, more than one. So what we're trying to do is get ahead of this so there's not compliance problems later. And maybe, Rheta, if you could kind of talk about, well, kind of, I mean, your vision for this and, and then also the, uh, um, what she refers to as, as various types of risks, like audit risk and that sort of thing, is we're trying to make sure that the um, city doesn't have, you, you may remember, for example, that a number of years ago, the county had overspent a certain funding source and had to cut back tremendously over the future years. Now, it was a different funding person. But had to cut back dramatically because of mistakes that were made back then. Our, uh, our objective actually is to point mistakes, of course.
Yeah.
And this will help that one. Anyway, I.
Right, so, um, we are ramping up a whole lot of money coming in. Right, so um we are ramping up a whole lot of money coming in. And it was a whole lot of money before we were getting the rescue plan money. Um and all the CB one, two, and three money and the three point five HCB money we applied for last year and the two hundred and fifty thousand of the car movie library and thousand of the EBA grant. That's just this last year. Oh, our first, we've got program in there too that could potentially fund, and we hope it will. These are really great things. However, when you get into federal money, um they are highly regulatory and complex to ensure that you're compliant. That takes a lot of time for that. And we've got some really great um municipal projects managers that are against that under with this, for what it's part. And what you really want, you know, is to have cooperation between municipal project managers, the grant managers, and fiscal staff to kind of have that chicken balance. And the county headed, that's what the county does. And while, you know, your municipal project managers are out there visiting, you know, where are these opportunities? You know, are we, are we ready for them, you know, kind of, as a construction going, that kind of thing. The fiscal compliance on the end, not as exciting, not very much fun. Critically important though, because that's the first thing that's gonna change is when you go through that fiscal review. And you get those aha moments. And you want to be um, you want to be ahead of that. I mean, um and we don't want to get in a situation where, you know, kind of um I like to avoid, I can't say we won't get into, we want to avoid any situation where we do have findings. We haven't done the subrecipropiometery. There is a two hundred and eighty-eight inch book, right, on subrecipropiometery? Of all the steps you need to take. And federal grants are horribly um labor intensive on the back end. And um this position will help ensure that we stay clean. Uh we, that we internally find problems before there are audit problems, that we um collaborate with the um municipal projects managers. This isn't really to do what they do, it's to complement what they do. But you also ought to be pretty savvy on federal, on cost accounting. Um you need to be understanding grant regs. Because once the application is probably the easiest thing. Um really, it's the, it's the, you know, again, the pin, some of the compliance that that really you've got a lot from that. So this is really um it will be, um should be grant funded, doesn't bother the grant. If it's your existing staff, they wouldn't allow it in most cases because they say you're supplying the cost, you're shifting the cost to your staff. You know, that you have on staff. So you really want to put this as a contract position. That means this grant's causing this extra work, and it's not part of your regular staff. And um we've done that in positions before, um and working with USDA, one of our partners on grants to demonstrate that. And it's important that we show that their role is is incremental work related to these grant projects, so that we can charge them to the grant.
We're in charge to the grant, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
Yeah, as long as um I can, I can like increase staff, convert staff on. Because they say they're just, you know, you're just shifting the cost of the grant by suppressing more than half staff.
Right.
But if we, their contract is structured generally, I'm gonna say, I, you know, there's an odd. Sometimes there's odds I don't expect, but generally, um if if it's demonstrated that that person was hired to manage these grants, and that's exclusively what they do, it can be a level cost of the grant, just like Cindy's direct cost on the grants. So um.
So this, we obviously, if we agree upon this, the next step would be, what, did we open it up to for applications to this? Or how does that, how does the next step work?
Um we would um solicit applications since this is a contract. Um it's not like our normal job description and and bar, bargaining, it's really a contract position on that for improvement.
Gotcha.
May I ask a question? Okay, so this position will not be paying into CalPERS or anything like that?
No, they will.
They will? Okay.
It will be a position, it will be a benefited position with all those umbrellas, but their employment is limited to, um schools do this often, like they only get typical funding. So the contract is always written to that cycle of funding. And um that way, it it allows you to end the employment agreement to that funding the way. It also tells you, it allows it to the employee um to be um shown as being dedicated to that funding um that program.
Yeah, their, 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 the costs are built in, yeah, for them. To have the person working on the program.
Okay.
So this, this, this uh expected salary would be, we have, we have it written down here, sixty-five to eighty-five thousand dollars. Is CalPERS and benefits added, is in that already, or that be on top of that?
That can be on top of that.
On top of that, okay.
You know, the person is gonna take one, one, they're probably educated, they're gonna probably be competitive on that. And then uh there's a risk in taking a one-year term employment agreement. Um so.
Well, yeah. But it also would open some doors for some people too, for the future too. So it's, it could be a good.
I, you know, if, I I would, I would say, look, if I'm an agent, I, you know, you might wanna, you know, take that risk.
And nothing says that they can't, that we, that the city doesn't decide to hold that position.
Right.
Because that's fine value, which this isn't going to be the end of this position, at the end of it, is not going to be the end of us applying for grants.
Yeah, and that has a great phrase for it. Um what, what do you call it? The five-year construction madness? And he's got, I can't remember the exact phrase he uses, but it is gonna be five years of grant construction madness.
Five years?
I can see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would imagine.
So um and and I would, this will be, one, it can be funded by the grant, two, it will keep us, I'm hoping it will be that person that can take the time to make sure people have a hot water of and all our paperwork, compliance, our files organized, our claims. Stuff, it'll upload some of the um, some of that pressure off our um, our, our project managers.
I'd like more reports on progress of all of these grants.
Yes.
I have no idea how many we have open right now that we're working on.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be a big plus for us once we start, like you talked about, to report, so we know what the heck's going on, because there's so many that we have no clue on this point. We talked about them. A lot of them, we, you know, all of them we've okayed, but we forget about them.
I think that that's a kind of a critical thing. Yeah, one of the reasons I've asked to follow our department has to put together a quarterly report on where activities are. Now, that's the first time that we've done that for a while. Usually, we've done one off with you. But um I think by doing a quarterly report, we may not hit the the comprehensive thing on everything the first time around. But my intent is to keep that going in June as well.
Yeah.
We'll do another quarterly report, so that um you have better information about all of the different um
Yeah.
activities you you have. I mean, they're, they're in other places, but it's hard to to put them in one place and see how broad they are.
Yeah, and I think it holds a huge value, because I mean, you get, you know, we had two council members have been here before me, and then I, you know, then we have Paul and Corey that's coming later on, you know, so there's, there's a lot of they don't know about, and there's a lot that I don't even probably know about. And so there's, there's stuff that keeps going on now, too, so the knowledge of this, which you know, for all of us would be huge.
And and I think it's good that you're reminded of it.
Oh, yeah. Well, so it helps us all keep on top of things, so it doesn't slip through the cracks.
I like, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to say that I agree with the, the council member there. That it would be, I think, so much easier for us to understand if we had, you know, we had a grant page and by uh by department as well as by date. Uh when we got the grant.
Yes.
You know, where we are in the process of the grant, and when's the final date that the reporters do. I think that would do more than just help us. I think it would help all our employees understand when reports are due and, you know, when the finals have to be in, because that's a really complicated part, too. And with federal grants, you don't want to miss those dates. Because, you know, they could come back to you and say, you know what, we can handle this very well, and we want you to pay this back.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do with uh with this position. Uh like I said, we are doing a comprehensive report. I'm not sure if uh if all of that information will be in that first report, but that's what we're starting to do.
So let's start making progress.
I would like to thank Paul, because it was his idea about a few weeks ago to have a a visual of all the projects and the, and the status of them. I'm very.
Pre-sequential.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you, Paul.
If there's nothing else, I'll just, I'll make the the motion then myself. Stop the resolution of the city council, the city of Irica, employment of a grant fiscal compliance manager and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement regarding such limited term employment together with all and and all other necessary documents.
And this is council member Barrett. I vote second to that.
Motion.
You've got a second, a third, and a fourth.
There you go.
I guess we'll do a roll call since.
You're not last, Corey.
Get your buzzers.
Yes, I'll walk over somebody, sorry.
You'll be called first in the next eight.
Would you like me to do a roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay, mayor for Denver.
Aye.
City council member Freeman.
Aye.
City council member McCoy.
Aye.
City council member Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye, all righty. That concludes, because we already did number nine, so that concludes that. Now we can move on to the city manager and staff reports.
Because I'm trying to look up uh some of my uh staffs. But the first person I'm gonna check is to see whether or not um police, you know, Liz is told that she doesn't have a report.
Uh she never does.
But uh if if police chief Gamache is on there, twenty-three seventy-five, there's his hand up. And he may not have a picture showing up because he's been on the road.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Speak loud.
Nice. Just barely. Um just uh a small apology. I've been uh traveling most of the days from a couple of Northern California um academies trying to recruit um new candidates for the police department, so I'm still on the road. I've heard most of the the council meeting from um my hands-free device, you know, in my car. And um so to address a couple uh small things, just a a quick report. Um the, to to um try to address Lorenzo's comment um just at the very beginning. The um, it's kind of interesting. Most folks during the COVID nineteen crisis um made an attempt to cooperate, help uh their neighbor, anything else. My clientele is a little different. And they are the type of folks that took advantage or um used the crisis to their advantage. So um yes, crime, crime does continue. Um however, just as a a small example, out of uh twenty-nine commercial burglaries, uh ten are solved with people in custody. So we're just a a little bit below thirty-three percent with almost twenty-five percent of the property returned. In compared to um standard years with no COVID and full staffing, which we're not at at this point, um we're actually sitting a lot better um statistically uh as far as clearance and um arrests. The other thing too about COVID um that caused a little grief is though um some of the laws regarding commercial burglaries, well, all the laws regarding commercial burglaries changed from commercial burglaries being felonies to commercial burglaries being misdemeanors. And um the county jail is not accepting misdemeanors as uh bookable offenses. So even though we may catch um commercial burglars, they don't go to jail and they don't spend a lot of time. So um it's, it's frustrating for the police department to put the same or more effort into catching commercial burglars and seeing less uh incarceration as it is for the public. So I I do um sympathize and empathize with the public when it comes to that. However, in the last three months, the police.
We may have lost you there, Chief.
Uh I'm sorry?
Could you repeat the last sentence you did? We may have lost you briefly.
Um, just, I I do sympathize with the public uh and their frustration for um for their vision or their, their um assessment of crime. However, the, the police department in the last three months has responded to six thousand five hundred calls for service.
Wow.
Um even with um a limited staff of of twelve sworn, so we are uh literally called to call every day and every night. Um in addition to that, um I would like to um thank council for the passage of item six, I believe. The advanced hire. This for the police department is huge because the length of time that it takes to accept applicants, go through an oral board screening, a background, a psychological screening, a medical exam, a physical exam, a hiring process to get a police officer on is months. Um the advanced hiring that you guys passed tonight will will lighten the load for my department and for myself and for recruiting an amazing amount. So I really really, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate that. Um on top of that, to end with a last piece of um really pretty good news, I think for most is that um I have a firm date. So we, we mailed out um letters to Walmart corporate and Walmart local regarding shopping carts that we've collected from around town. And um corporate has responded back to me with a firm date to pick up all of the shopping carts, uh including destroyed carts, every cart that's, that's branded with the Walmart name by April thirteenth. So um just in the next couple of weeks, um Ben and Matt should be pretty happy that we get the um remaining Walmart carts out. And also, they've um agreed to a continuous pickup at our request um for the, for additional carts in the future. So between now and when, we end up with a um a a city ordinance about carts, we should be pretty good shape. Um and I do have a tracking number and an assurance from Walmart corporate that those carts will be done and out of our yard by April thirteenth. And that's about it from the PD.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next person I'd like to recognize, and I'm not sure he has a report tonight, but he's on the line, and that's uh Chief Lemos.
And Matt.
And Matt, that'll be that. Let me check on Chief Lemos. Okay, I don't see him popping up. But let's go, oh, there. Are you there, uh Chief?
Yeah, I'm here.
Did you have a report this evening? I couldn't remember.
Uh we hadn't talked about it, but I'll, I'll just make it quick. Um uh Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you may remember, I sent out a um email last week kind of giving you an update on the prescribed burn that took place um up off of Bennett Drive on uh Jeff Stone's property. Uh that was one where um I was approached by uh the Shasta Valley RCD and the uh Prescribed Burn Association that they're uh trying to get going and and encourage property owners to uh do some burning on their property to reduce the fire danger. So it was the first time I had been involved with one. And the collaborative effort that uh took place between all the agencies, in fact, there were probably over fifty people, maybe sixty, and some of those were property owners from around the county that were interested in uh doing prescribed burns on their property. So all in all, it was a great success. Um no escapes, uh no problems. I was only there for the first day of the actual burn, and then um Scott Steinbring, the, the so-called burn boss, um he oversaw the the operation and had uh several members of the uh Karuk firefighting team there doing the actual um labor-intensive work of, you know, piling and burning and and taking care of the um the blood and sweat and tears of, on the ground. So anyway, uh great, great opportunity to see how it works and hopefully. So, anyway, uh, great, great opportunity to see how it works and hopefully will, um, be a, um, a launchpad for more of those in the future, either on the outskirts of town or, you know, some properties that, you know, that warrant that. And, and I'll caution you that not all, not all projects would be, um, warranted or could be done safely. So, you know, that plus the short window that we have, uh, to do it safely, it, uh, kind of limits the amount that you can do. But, uh, anyway, I just wanted you to know that, uh, that's why there was some smoke in the air last, um, Tuesday, and, um, everything went well. So, I'd happy to answer any questions you have.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Like to, oh, Matt's already unmuted. So, Matt, you're, you're muted and ready.
I'm ready to go. Yeah, I'd just like to echo Chief Gamash's sentiment on thanking the council, um, for adopting the advanced hire policy. Um, we, we're in a similar boat with, uh, PD down in Public Works where it takes a lot of time to find a licensed operator, get them background checked, that, that checked up and, and get them into work, um, just the, I'm not sure everyone's aware, but we are in probably the largest state of flux staffing-wise, that we've ever been in, um, as far back as I've researched through Public Works, even when we had the, you know, the so-called baby boomer bubble burst on us about eight years ago, um, when a lot of our seasoned vets retired. We've got moving pieces, I think when I added it up the other day, with laterals and promotions and vacancies created by, uh, retirements and other items. I think we're looking at eight or nine positions that are filling. Um, a lot of those are internal, but, um, this advanced hire policy is a godsend. And I personally like to thank Reda and Steve for their work on, on finding that, forming that. Um, I think, I, I'm just right there with Chief, it's, it's huge. And it's going to secure the Department of Public Works and, and stabilize us in the years to come. So, thanks a lot for that. Along that line, we had a recent operator in training position open up over at the wastewater treatment plant, which was filled internally. And we're excited to get that going and, and, you know, that's one of those that takes time or you, just to study the tests out of the SAC state books and, and do all of the, the college coursework it is to become a wastewater operator, um, that's the first part. And then you have to do an entire year at the plant before you can take the grade-one operator test. And then there's a lot more coursework, and then you take the grade-two, which is what the minimum requirement is just down at the wastewater plant. So, again, this advanced hire thing's great. Steve mentioned that we have the quarterly reports coming up. Um, my staff and I have been working on those for you, and they're going to answer a lot of the questions that you asked this evening, um, including the dates on the grants and where we are, where we're status. And, and I agree with Joan, it is a, it's a powerful, um, very powerful item to have at your fingertips, so everyone in the organization can take a look at it and know that snapshot in time, because we are, as we've spoken to tonight, extremely busy, that whirlwind of, of construction that's coming at us, grant-funded and, and just in-house projects is, it's a mouthful, so it'll be nice to break it down. I am working on a visual for you. Um, and my plan is, instead of doing it computerized, I'm just going to stand there on an easel with a big gigantic black and white map and show it to you in color. So, we're just going to draw on it and talk about it as we go. So, other than that, um, the maintenance division's out there pounding away on the streets and keeping everything going, getting ready for spring, getting these parks opened up and, uh, water division and wastewater, we're, we're just go, doing what we can and keeping everything running. And fleet division, like I mentioned, the, the OIT position over in wastewater, that was actually filled with a mechanic, um, that was, so it was an internal hire. It was one of our mechanics down at the fleet shop, so he's moving over, it's Matthew Bowles. We're very excited to have his knowledge on pumps and, and mechanicals over there at the wastewater plant, creating a vacancy in fleet, obviously, but that's, um, we're getting that blown out. And lots and lots of moving parts, and I can explain more, uh, in the quarterlies, but that's about all I've got for tonight.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. All righty.
So, I wanted to mention that next week at, um, five o'clock on Tuesday, the thirteenth, we will have a workshop. The workshop, I kept the order of these in the memo that we'll give to you, but.
So, um, I, I, I don't know if anybody else has issues with, with the thirteenth, but I know that I've got LTC and Gary has.
MAFKA, but mine took two.
Okay, but is there any way that we could possibly meet on Wednesday? At the same time?
That's, I mean, that's kind of, I, in that aspect, it would get me off the hook because it's my wife's birthday, so.
On the thirteenth?
Yes.
Oh.
So, it would.
I do got enough reasons.
I've already talked to her about it, so it's whatever the council wants to do.
Yes, we were talking about, you know, trying to do it at five, you know, get in here a little bit earlier. And, uh, I know that I talked to Debbie about it. It's going to work for you, it'll work for me, if it'll work for you, what about you two?
Either one works for me.
Wednesday, the fourteenth at five.
Oh, that works for everybody, then.
Sorry.
It's probably same.
Yeah.
Probably give me a few more points.
Yeah.
Because I haven't been making very good points.
Does it work for you? Thirteen's a good date.
So, that is, I want to make sure that, um.
Matt?
No.
It's Wednesday, the.
Fourteenth.
Wednesday is Wednesday for April. Yeah, it's at five o'clock.
Okay.
If that works for everybody.
And it sounds like it's working for councilmembers on that night?
Yes.
Yay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. It's going to be kind of tight for me. And we can't have our mayor getting in trouble with his wife.
No. You know, she was okay with it. She says that now, but.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want it to be after.
Yeah.
So, I, um, want to make sure that we, um, at one point, we talked about having the workshop start at four, um, so that we didn't end up with, um, wrong things. And part of the reason why we moved to five was the LTC moving.
Correct.
I'm assuming that the preference, based on what I heard tonight, is five o'clock on Wednesday.
I could do four. I don't know about the rest of you.
It doesn't matter to me.
I guess it's, I.
Is that open to the public?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
If I think it's you here, people get five.
Yeah. My calendar's.
My, like, no, I'm going to select one to the balance and stuff.
So, five would be safer.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to, because it comes into the next thing I am going to talk to you about, so four fourteen, twenty-one, at five will be the events, business services, and tourism discussion.
Correct.
Um, I'm going to have to notify a couple of entities.
Oh.
Outside, but I, you know, we'll, we'll deal with that, uh, then maybe I'll resume. If not, there's this, this workshop, I think, is just that, is a workshop to talk about.
Just discussion, yeah.
Uh, you know, where we are kind of moving through the recovery, you know, COVID is now, you know, we've gone from purple to red to orange and headed towards yellow.
Yes.
Um, sounds like there's a yellow brick road sign in there, but anyway. And, and so, when I see these meetings, to talk about how we want to approach it, not necessarily make any decisions or recommendations. But I do think we need to do that because I think there's a lot of moving parts that are possible. And I'm looking for some guidance before I go out and do something like, send out a request for a qualification, letters of interest, or whatever. I think we really need to decide what is it that, that the council is looking for in terms of priorities in those three meetings.
I think it'd be good, I think it'd be all of us, you know, working our heads and putting our, pulling our heads together and figuring out the future, because like you said, this whole COVID, as, as last year's thrown so many different avenues into a tailspin, that's ridiculous.
And then I'm going to ask Parker, while I remember, to help me, the Chamber of Commerce and the UCF were interested to know when this meeting is going to be. So, I'd like to let, and if you have other people that talk to you, then we'll. Please write the list and let them know.
Yes, that's all.
That's fine.
Mr. Man, this is Paul McQuaid, I'd like to ask that you and city manager, when you talk, maybe come up with that list that I know that Steve's talked about, and I think he already has it. And, and not at the next meeting, but maybe at the end of the nineteenth meeting that you could run, you'd have that list on the agenda of things that we have told you we want to talk about at these, um, hang on, hang on, yeah, at these, at these planning session workshops. And that we can kind of look at, I just want to revisit them to make sure there's something on there that we go, no, we don't want, or something on there that we want to add.
Absolutely.
That's all.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't catch the date that you were looking at. Are you looking for that on the fourteenth or the?
No, no, on the fourteenth, there's always notice, we make no decisions.
All right.
So, we never make any decision, they're strictly planning, so I'm not, I was, I'm asking for it on the twentieth.
Okay.
And I'm asking for it at the end of the agenda, at the very end of the agenda, not as a item that is a, that takes up lots and lots of, you know.
Okay.
We don't want to take thirty minutes on this item.
So, we can put together what we think, some of them we think may have been taken care of by.
That's why.
Items there, and so I think we need to have a meeting once, so I'm going to encourage you, if you have things that, um, that haven't been addressed, uh, we can, we can do, uh, that, that way. Uh, we have already the May meeting, which is the next thing we're talking about, but anyway, we can put that on the agenda.
No, I mean, I think, I think for the most, I know I've given, for the most part, given in everything, I, I just want to see where we are, and I don't think it hurts every three months to look at it and go, you know, we've covered these, we, we, we're not really worried about what we've covered. We're worried about what we have in front of us, because we've already covered, we're covered.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
New ideas as well.
Well, new, if something that comes up, yes, but not, not to be, um, a planning session in and of itself, please. You know?
Well, except for the budget, the budgetary workshop, that's where we're planning for the next.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't want to spend thirty minutes on it or forty minutes, I just, you know.
Okay.
We can spend five minutes on it at the max.
I, I can probably spend five minutes on it.
Yes, I don't know what you're talking about.
I will, I'll bring some duct tape for me, so don't worry.
And if you're bringing some?
Bring a nice cord.
Yeah, bring, bring a nice color, if it matches the.
It'll match my.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put that on, um, down, uh, as either last regular agenda item or probably, probably the last regular agenda. Okay.
Well, no, public can be in it, I, that's all I'm saying, I'm saying I don't want to spend, as a council, we can have a planning session, do planning sessions later, too.
Yeah.
I just want to kind of look at it right now and give a snapshot, that's all I want.
Yeah, usually a snapshot.
I want a snapshot in time.
And you do mention protecting. Okay.
And you might, you might have to refresh your memory, say, oh, remember we talked about? You go, well, what about X? Remember, we talked about X, and this is what you, you know, oh, yeah, you're right, okay.
Yeah, okay. So, in terms of, while we're still on workshops, um, we have actually talked about this, but I don't remember the resolution of it. So, May eleventh was the original date for the, the budget workshop. We talked about maybe needing to move it because budget workshops tend to be longer. And we try to keep them bounded by time, but it doesn't always work because it's a lot of information. And we talked about moving it from the eleventh to the twelfth specifically so that, uh, the LTC meeting would not interfere with the four o'clock start.
Right.
And so, we, we want to purposely start that at four o'clock. But we didn't actually decide that, we just talked about it. So, what I'd like to do tonight is to suggest that, instead of it being May eleventh and starting at five, particularly after, sounds like two of you may have meetings that day. Possibly, if we could shoot for the twelfth, started at four, for, um, the budget workshop, we'll go ahead and schedule that. So, we, we can send you an email, but if any of you have any conflicts with that, if you could let us know fairly quickly, because we can, we can also explore other days that week, but we really, we've been targeting that time. We're, you know, it's, it's always hard to get everything done on a budget, it always is. But we've been targeting that, that day, we kind of like to keep it so that we have a reasonable shot of giving you, uh, a budget by the end of the fiscal year.
And I agree.
That's May eleventh?
May twelve.
Yeah, let's go to May twelfth, then, you want to go right?
I think at four o'clock.
Four o'clock? Cory, is that a little?
No, four o'clock will be fine. That's, that's.
May twelfth.
It's when it's only a week away.
Right.
I have a hard time with it. I've got stuff scheduled out so far.
I'll raise you thirty seconds.
Thirty, thirty and thirty seconds, no.
So, that is one, uh, meeting where, um, if you would like to build in, and, and maybe we can talk about this as we come closer to the evening, there, there may need to be a formal break. If I even include, uh, you know, sustenance of the, you know.
That's good, that's, that's.
Yes, the, the food and water.
Yes, absolutely.
So, anyway, that might be something that, but anyway, so that's what I want to do. There's another thing I'm going to bring up, but, uh, I don't remember it, so I'll send you an email when I think of it.
Hang on, Steve. We're going from four o'clock, what are we scheduling, until six-thirty?
Oh, I, I know.
I don't like an end.
I don't like them being ended.
I suspected it will be.
All the longer.
You know, I suspected, I mean, the.
Eight? Just to make sure?
Yeah.
No, I mean, I don't know, I'm, I'm, that's right, nobody has a meeting, that's why I moved it.
Well, I see what you're saying.
I'll just block out till.
I'll block it out, yeah.
Yeah.
One of the, the things about this is that we have talked to you about a number of the things that will be in the budget, but that doesn't mean we've covered everything so that you can have those decisions. And if you recall, this is going to be a, more of a numbers budget.
Right.
And we're telling you what's going on as opposed to the larger document, particular review. Um, we're, we're sort of working at, um, building off of last year's budget where we gave you, you may recall, one-year budget, but with a, I don't remember the term for it.
Project.
A project, right, for the, the next year. And that's, again, I think what we're looking at this time as well.
Well, we're really, we had, um, staff meetings with the, Steve and I, with the department heads, and so they are looking forward to speaking to you, and I think we have a format similar to that. And I thought that was really useful to hear what they're trying to accomplish with these budgets. Um, numbers may not be locked in, um, so I don't want people to think about it because the data's constantly moving as they get better quotes and things like that.
Right.
But, um, I'll have a ballpark, and, um, but it's kind of their opportunity to tell you what they're trying to develop out of these budgets or what they're trying to deliver. And, um, I think it's, it's, I, Joan, I think you were about last year, Steve maybe didn't have as much of advantage or, or not, but I do remember last year, we kind of all gathered around, um, and, and heard from the department heads. I thought it was really useful.
Yeah, I remember because I kept calling people down to the microphone.
Right. That's what I recall, yeah, yeah, so, uh, we didn't have all our fit, uh, G-D-O-L in at that point, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, can you clarify for all of us here and those that are on screen or on phone that this is a public meeting?
Yes, absolutely, everybody needs to know it's a public meeting to go over these issues, financial issues of this, of the city and, and our budget plan.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And then, uh, we will talk when we talk about the budget or the workshop topics on the twentieth.
Yeah.
We'll also talk about, um, what day we might want to meet in the future, because it, it may not be Tuesdays.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. But that might take another few minutes.
Yeah, we're good to go for now. Well, there are unintended consequences of moving, we understand, to Tuesday, but there are also positive consequences within the office.
Yes.
And, and within the council, so I think that far outweighs unintended consequences.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Well, anything else?
We have closed. We have closed.
We have, we have council's report, yes.
Oh, council.
Well, I'll start off, Paul. I'll keep mine quick. Um, I noticed that there is an advertisement for a new car wash, they're trying to get a new car wash there at Riley Center, have a nice new sign up, and I think that's really good. Yes, it must be a chain. Um, as I was pulling out today, I noticed that there are three trucks and they are working on surveying and doing other things on the temporary property.
Yes.
So, that was nice to see. Um, I wanted to, um, uh, I didn't realize we had a twenty-four-hour store in Irica. Any more, but the Chevron.
Yes.
Has a big sign up over twenty-four hours from the inside. So, again, I know that sounds small, but I mean, it's kind of like if you have to get something in the middle of the night.
It's convenient for me, it's right around the corner.
Yeah. So. They're probably over twenty-four hours, yeah, yeah, they probably are. Um, uh, credit infrastructure is cutting along, I've been looking at it, they're actually putting the floor in the mezzanine, uh, today when I went by. And then, um, two last things, again, um, I'm getting very too right with YPD again. I do want to thank, um, YPD for, um, letting me ride along. Um, and I want to thank them for, uh, because I see them out routinely when I'm with them, and even when I'm not, I see them routinely making stops at homeless camps and for homeless people within the city, and they're. And they're not, they're not stops to check and make sure that they're necessarily, you know, in, you know, under, under city code, it's to make sure they're okay, they see somebody that, that, you know, they're stopping, and I appreciate that.
Safety checks.
And safety checks, or wellness, and I also want to thank, um, YPD and Willow. Because we do have a regular trash pickup with the camps, most of the camp, not all. Most of the camps, you know, uh, take the bags that we give them, and they put everything in them, and they tie them, put them out on the curb, and then we know where to pick them up. I want to thank Willow, and I want to thank YPD and Steve, uh, for doing that. I appreciate that very much, and I do want to, I look forward to, last thing. I look forward to starting to work, probably within a week or two, on the shelter again, uh, as a, just as a volunteer. They're having one of their board meetings tonight. Um, we just so want to get this thing up and running, so we have it up and running by next winter, it's, it's, but it's a money thing. And we need, we need money, any people that want to make donations of five, ten, fifteen, twenty dollars, hundred dollars, thousand, two thousand, they'll take it. If, if they're, them generous benefactor that could, you know, could, could give them seventy-five to a hundred fifty thousand, they'd be done. But, but it, it doesn't work that way, so, you know, just, if, and anybody gets a chance, come by, if we're working on it. Um, Steve or somebody will show you around it. It's all volunteer labor. Thank you.
Thank you, that's great, yeah, I said, just need to re- reiterate on the trash, when people see it along the roads. It's because it's, they're actually putting it out there for us to collect, and at least it's not getting left up in the woods or in the parks and stuff, so that's good. It's positive. We'll jump over to Joan this time on this call.
Oh, my turn. Um, so, I, I, uh, I'll keep it short, but I did want to let you know, uh, the next Lola meeting was supposed to be in Montague.
Right.
The city of Montague, I spoke to the mayor about this, but the city of Montague is not able to have it, um, because their last restaurant had been closed. That was the best one, so they don't have, they don't have, we go and we do it, so, um. So, we received a phone call from the mayor of Leeds, this Steve Catalon, Cavalero? Cavalero? Cavaloney? Cavalero, I think. Anyway, and she called and asked if Wayrica would do it, and honestly, we were close to have Lola out last year, and remember, we canceled because of COVID. So, I talked the thing about it, and I talked with the mayor of Montague. And, uh, we thought that it would be a nice gesture if we, if we would host it in, um. Uh, along with, you know, our sister city, with Montague, and like our little sister, right, okay. And so, I mean, most of the people in Montague feed in Wayrica anyway, right? So, uh, anyway, so then, uh, I, after talking, uh, with Wayne, with mayor. I actually called two back, and I said, yeah, I think we can do it, and then I made some phone calls for some, uh, local places that might be available. And the one that was available that was big enough is the tent, uh, at Jefferson Roadhouse. And they are more than willing to do it, they're, they're putting together a special, um, menu for us, it's more than affordable. Uh, and so, now, Arthur, thank you, Arthur, Arthur's been working with me, and thank you Liz for helping both of us. Uh, because, you know, she's helped us out on that before, and, and she's put together the flyers for us. So, we're putting together flyers going out tomorrow. Keep in mind, it's two weeks from tomorrow, and we've got to hustle and get the numbers. So, this will be on April twenty-first, it will be at five o'clock, it will be at the, the tent outside at Jefferson Roadhouse. And they have plenty of room for everybody to spread out, so, so that it will be socially distanced.
Can I point out something? I've been to events before hosted by the city of Montague, and they have done it at the community center and hired a catering service.
They did it at the community center, and they hired the restaurant people to do it.
No, but they could hire any.
They could, but they're not.
Yeah.
Um, they don't, they don't, um, I don't know if you remember Glenn and Becky, well, well, you know, Glenn died. And then he moved away. So, those were their, the, uh, the shoes and Tito with her children, yeah. So, really, they, they didn't have any caterers over there, they have a hard time getting caterers. So, anyway, they just said, no, can't do it. So, they, they did like the idea of doing it in partnership with the city of Wayrica, so.
Thank you for all the work that you've done.
Yep.
Thank you, and Arthur.
It's a great idea.
And, uh, everybody for doing what you did.
We, we hope we save it. So, now, Arthur is, uh, working on that, we're going, we got the draft, uh, of the flyer going, thanks for Liz's help, and then we're going to, uh, send it out tomorrow. Um, and then, uh, you know what's going to happen, since it's only two weeks away, we're going to have to do a lot of.
Yeah.
Phone calls, because Heidi, uh, the owner over there wants the numbers by the fifteenth.
Yeah, I know, that's good.
And this is the twenty-first, so, I mean, the, the event's on the twenty-first.
You got a week to get numbers.
Yeah, exactly, so I'm going to be making a lot of phone calls.
Give you a list.
Okay, we'll do it.
Who is the chair of Lola right now?
Uh, it's her.
Yeah, it's her.
It's, it's kind of, we're kind of co-chairing it now. You know, she's a, she's, I, I call her the official chair. But anyway, she's, anyway, it's supposed to be technically, it's supposed to be this next Wednesday, the thirteenth.
Supposed to be, uh.
But, then like, now that, when it's come to this, we put it off.
Yeah.
Giving the, I think we can put it together.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's going off.
Oh, and I talked to Mike and talked to Stephanie, so he knew the number of the new O E S guy, Office of Emergency Services, and I believe that he will be our speaker.
Oh, oh, good. Good.
Yeah.
That's all.
That's it.
Good. Mr. Milton.
Oh, I'm not me. Um, got a call from, actually Dusty Bill. I'm forgetting what his name is, so I could, and he, he was concerned that the sign, um, south Wayrica, the Wayrica sign on Newton property before the Fairchild Medical Center, Court of it is missing.
Oh.
So, the wind has taken it away. Yes. Yeah, a big chunk of it is gone, so it starts at, uh, probably the E, so the Y and R are missing off that sign, so it's blown away. I didn't see it in the field, I.
Were Eka's what you're?
Or Eka, so it's, uh, it's chopped, it's chopped off, I think the wind took it off, but I didn't see, I didn't see a lane out there.
No, I didn't see a lane either, but I think the wind did take it, somebody might have got something with it out.
Anyway, so he's, he's concerned, that's the main interest, the big sign, it looks like we're closed or not, care about our signage for our town, so.
I didn't even notice it.
Yeah. I've been by there, but.
No, I know, I know, it's the other day.
We have to work with. Yeah, to detour, uh, airway to the north where that sign is, so when they come in, they'll know where they are.
Where they're at.
Yes, maybe they might buy more, come around, uh, on Carolina.
Maybe they'll buy more.
Yeah.
Town, yeah.
So, yeah, it's good news, uh, when you get it fixed. I'm not, I'm Paul, I'm excited to see all the action taking place with the, um, Harbor Freight out at the, at the junction.
Oh, yeah.
And it is a chain, but it is a local person who is doing the car wash.
So.
Oh, really?
It's John Rafferty.
John who?
John Rafferty.
Next one.
His name's Otto, it's a principal owner.
Richter scale, right.
Yeah, so he's, that's his property, so does owner, but it's a chain, looks good, so I don't even working on it. And the Pembroke's, they're testing.
John bought it, it'll be a several on the Richter scale at least. Why even being hated, no?
That was so bad. That used to have on the radio.
Yeah. And for me, uh, on personal, but also that does affect our communities, as our real estate market is unbelievable. Hot right now, I am, I was going to take time off, and.
So much for your time.
I didn't take time off, I went right into being busy, I mean. Listings I've been listening to today is on market, boom, gone. I'm seeing over bits.
Crazy.
Oh, yeah. I got two over the, in my listings. And, um. Doesn't interest, the interest rates are great, so it's good, um, but it's a busy, busy market.
Have you noticed new people more than locals just buying local, or is it people from out of the area?
Um, immiscible. The Scott Valley market, though, a lot of out of timers, it's really interesting.
Scott Valley and.
A lot of, a lot of out of town people come up to Scott Valley or the other outlining areas. Um, and we're starting to see some land going to escrow, because there isn't, um, existing inventory. So, people are, are looking to buy lots and land that's available, a lot of, lot of outer area. Bigger piece of land have gone sold, or gone to the escrow, we're talking fifty acres, under twenty-seven acres. A lot of people are looking to get out of heavy city, they've sold their house, a fortune, come up, they want the peace and quiet, but they'll build nice homes. And they're, they're going to build, you know, whether it be a regular house or whatever, but the land is selling. Land that's not, you know, I thought would never sell, has all gone, gone to escrow, so it's, it's. We're going to see a, I think, a lot of changes up here, a lot of new people, but a lot of locals. Um, one of the concerns with, you know, our prices getting a little out of hand, is it does take affordability away from our local people with various levels, and so it does, that's, that's right there, so there's a problem. But, I am, so, but the interest rates being down, though. It is increasing the affordability, so, so it is good, so it's busy. Um, so, yeah, everything's good, um. I'm, uh, happy to announce that I'm adopted a rescue dog, and I'm, or, he's under foster, but we had a rub go. I got, got him back, got some training, so officially, I'm going to sign his adoption paper, so. Just encouraging that anybody out there that can, you know, to definitely get a, uh, a shelter dog, because he was on the list in Contra Costa County to be euthanized.
Oh.
And Rescue Ranch, a lady reached out that works with them, and four dogs were rescued with less than twenty-four hours ago, before they were going to be put down. And he's a great dog, what they had listed for him was nothing near what this dog is, so, um, he's getting a chance in life with me and my family, and. He's happy, and the first night he slept with both of us, right against me, his legs around my neck, like, like he didn't want to go anywhere, so. So, anyways, that's good, but.
Congratulations.
Yes, yes, yeah, he looks just like the one I lost, it was kind of crazy, I saw him up there, I said, oh my gosh, he looks like my boy, he's lost three months ago, and some, something connected me with him, and, um, yeah, so we're going through some training, we have some issues that. That he thought it was fun, wherever he, whoever had him for, where he came from before, he thought was fun time. You know, a counterband that isn't fun in my house. So, taking off the loaf of bread, and wasn't okay, so, we're getting, we're getting through those, so, so that's exciting, so, yeah. I'd like to encourage anybody listening or anybody to definitely, don't shop to adopt if they can, because, you know, you just tell. You, it's appreciative, so, but that's going to do it for me.
Awesome, yeah.
Mister Mayor, this is Matt, if I may interject.
Yes, Matt?
I just wanted to speak quick, wanted to speak quickly to, uh, Corey's discussion of the Wayrica billboard on the south end of town. Public Works is in possession of the remaining pieces that were blown over by the windstorm. So, that is actually owned and maintained by the city. Um, Liz and I did some digging back through the vault, uh, about a week or two ago, and, uh, dug up some paperwork that spoke to that, so. We are actively looking into how to fund the replacement and or refurbishment of that sign.
Yeah, okay, yeah, it's definitely a sign that all of us like to see. Not all of us pay attention, unfortunately.
Subtle vision.
I've driven through it three times, from the fair in the last two days, and I.
I noticed that I forgot to say something about that. You're going to get the after, like, quick answer.
Yeah. Okay, um, since last we met, I went to a, uh, nano cellulose pour over at Hibbard Field.
Oh, I'm glad you.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, it was very nice, and this is the actual stuff, this is show and tell, but it's kind of cool, they.
That was your dinner.
I know.
I was wondering what that was, and I.
Yeah.
I want to ask questions.
It's the, the nano cellulose stuff that you, the additive, it's a polymer that you put in. It, it's so many uses, I'm just going to read three sentences there in a minute, but for the pour at Hibbard Field. It was nine yards of concrete and thirty-five pounds of this that they sent down to add to it. And what you get out of that, um. The head of a pin is one million nanometers wide. Cellulose nano crystals are six nanometer, nanometers wide. As strong as steel and only one fifth the weight.
Wow.
Yeah, typically made from pulp, but can be made from wood chips, but, um, the application for this is amazing. Structural, uh, food containers coatings on fresh fruit can extend the life weeks. Um, there's other words in here that I've never seen before, so I won't go there, but, uh. Yes, yes.
Ooh. That's an option. You never wanted to move again.
Yeah, there you go.
Make sure you smile, huh?
Um, I was going to ask, um, at what phase of COVID, as we go down, will we be allowed to uh, introduce seating, uh, for the public again, and, uh. I would think now, right?
And that's, I, I actually, since you brought that up, I would, I'd ask the councils, I'd like, I would like to move forward on that, so.
Well, I think that's what we are asking Steve to bring.
That was, his is the general, I'm, I'm talking specific, like, as soon as possible, so.
Well, there's no reason why we can't bring back at least eight, like we were before, when we were, we are a tier higher before.
Yes, I'm done, thank you.
This C D C says every three feet now, you only need three feet.
Yeah, I know.
And they said they aired last year, when they said six, on side caution, but three is, is all you need. Just like they said, they aired on the side of caution with spray cleaning, today they're saying that you have a one in ten thousand chance of really catching it. You don't need to wash vegetables, you don't need to go through and spray everything anymore, so.
I don't, it's, it's, I would say, I'm, I'm asking the council, do we want to do this the next, this next meeting, I would like to open it up for the next meeting.
I would like to, at, at fifty percent, a hundred percent.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 absolutely, not, no, just, not even that, I'm just saying, I'm just saying up to what we had before, so we, so we get it cleared off. Which was up, I think, ten, is that what, is that what we decided before was ten?
I don't remember, I, in my mind, it sticks, in my mind, that I was outside to prevent the ninth person from coming in.
Yeah.
So, that was my job.
Right. But we've got dirty chairs, so we can bring.
Well, it depends on whether it's two chairs in between, and then.
I think it's like fifteen, fifteen people.
I would prefer to have Steve bring back Steve's recommendation, and at that time, we meld our recommendation to, to cities. Rather than have people, rather than bring people in right at the next meeting, and then he brings back, uh, we, we've only been one day in this, for one thing.
Well, we've only, we've moved two tiers.
We could have moved last year.
We moved two tiers, so we, we've actually moved another tier since then.
Yeah.
So, we've actually, we, we've progressed.
Yeah. And I know, I, we've all had the shots, I think, so.
Not me, three of us.
So, did your brother have his? Not yet.
Oh, darn.
Okay.
So, um. Okay, so I, I, direction here.
No, I'm sorry, we're, we're doing the thing, we're doing this to you, yeah.
So, um, it, it's, it's, uh, yeah, okay. So, there's a couple of possibilities, one is, I don't know off the top of my head what orange says, but I know it's a lot better than purple. And so, it probably would allow us to do the eight people.
Yeah.
And, and we could, and are you talking about for the workshop on the Wednesday?
No, I'm talking city council, city council.
You're talking about the twenty?
Yeah, the next city council. Okay, that's what I'm talking about.
All right. Steve, I, I, with a, with a three foot, I don't see why you can't get anywhere from eighteen to twenty-three people in here.
Uh, yeah, if it's only, if it's only, if that's what the rules are.
Yeah.
Then, um, then probably we don't have any, I.
Yeah.
I, I don't, you know, we just tell people to sit, uh.
We just block off, it's so.
Well, you, what you do is, what you normally do with that is you, because of the, that plus the rows are, you block off the rows, like, what, you know, there's some of that on the first row here.
Yep.
I think to protect me, I think that's, anyway, um, you block the, the rows off, and then.
Every other row.
If it's only three feet, then it's like two seats in between.
Yeah.
Not, and so.
If you go, if you go every other seat in every other row, you're definitely three feet away, you're working three feet.
That's at least, that's at least twelve people.
Yeah, I'd, I'd say at least twelve to fifteen.
So, let's, let's just begin, with the, just the next city council, you can find tune it on, just say the next city council meeting, up to twelve people.
On the twentieth, well, okay, we'll come up with some kind of recommendation. You may recall that when this first started, I actually took a measuring tape from person to person to person to person.
Oh, you did, yeah.
And, and, uh, it was surprising to, I think, people, uh, how, how much distance there was at six foot, now, three foot a lot easier. Uh, how, how much distance there was at six foot. Now, three foot is a lot.
Yeah.
Now, they will need to be masked up if they choose to come in here. But I mean, that's not my rule, but they'll need to be masked up.
Yeah.
You still got.
Yeah. And if they choose not to be masked up, then they'll, they'll, they'll have to be asked to leave. And if, and if they don't leave, then we'll deal with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're gonna have people, you may have people that come and don't want to. You, I, I've seen them in the restaurants here.
Oh, yeah.
And they've had to remove them.
Yep.
All right.
So is that, is that good with the council then? Up to twelve for this next, the next city council meeting? And then they, they give them a chance to research and then they can bring it back to the council and say, okay, can actually have twenty. But I don't think that's gonna happen. But I'm just saying, whatever, whatever the recommendation at that point.
The, the goal is to try to get twelve.
Yep.
We can dream, even when we're wide open, we don't, we rarely get twelve people outside of staff.
All it is, is that I have to build in a mechanism so that if it is twelve, somebody directs the thirteenth person not to come in.
I'll do it.
That's true.
Well, but that's what I mean. You just have to, it's a mechanism and, and uh.
Pretty lucky we can see there's twelve people sitting. I said, we're pretty lucky we can see there's twelve people sitting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, you did.
She just disappeared.
Say you were done, Debbie.
Yes.
Yeah, she passed the ban.
Yeah, so on, to, on lines, we can go into the, in this meeting and go in this closed session, but um. We did have a citizen, like you said earlier, speak of the park and reservations on that, which you're gonna bring back to us on. How we do that. One thing I would like to see on, on number of the parks and stuff like that we were talking about, it's like the difference, right? Um, what is our, based on our park rules on number of people that had, on a reservation wise? So in other words, if they were to reserve the park, how many, what does that number look like? So that's what I'd like to bring back to us and go in conjunction to that. Just say, unless you know on top of the head.
Uh, no, what I can tell you though is that it will be a lot more difficult of an answer than you think.
Okay.
And that's because the areas that can be rented are different sizes.
Uh-huh.
Different number of tables. And then if they have more people than can fit in a picnic table. What's the, you know, you see what I mean?
I see, I, I get you. I see what you're saying.
The answer is going to be.
A little.
I can, what I can do is give you an example.
Okay.
Number one, and I mean these rules, if you recall, our park rules would be updated.
Yes, yes.
And but, you know, not, not in the cards. So.
I guess that's, I get, and the maintenance, main reason why this was brought up is because people need to know is because the trash that's being, being left behind. Because now some citizens feel that it's the city's responsibility to pick up their trash after they're done with their party.
What?
Yes.
And, and I'd like to have a, I'd like with, with that conversation and Matt, who would need to be president, perhaps even Ben. A conversation about communication between the park hosts and Ben and Matt. Um, I, vis a vis like telling people, well, I don't really have any guidelines on that when we know there are guidelines. Um, I'm, I'm really tired of hearing it. And um, also um. Go to the city council meeting rather than perhaps going to Matt Bray or, or um, his underling first and chatting about it. Um, it's, you know, if you're in the military, you know chain of command. Those that have been in the military, maybe they don't know it. But there's a definite chain of command in every organization. And, you know, you don't, you, I, you don't go directly to Joe Biden. When your electricity is not working in Wairika, first, first you call the power company. Then you call Hunter.
Yeah.
So we, we, there's, there's needs to be some definite talk. I, I, I've heard this before. I have no guidelines. I have no guidelines. I have no guidelines.
Comes down to, I think, uh, the park rules and stuff, but they're not, they're not clearly defined. And that's what we're talking about. So.
Well, I think there's a number of different things. And so, but here's what I'd like to do is, is um, I, I know exactly what, what. And it's been a concern and um, and so we need to try to solve it at the staff level.
Yeah.
And then if we uh. I, I don't think that we need um, well, we could use a whole park ordinance update. That's a different thing. But we need to, to do that. And then we will have uh new park hosts at some point. We're, we're recruiting and have received. Um, multiple applications. So that's a good sign. And then we want to, when they come on board, also train them in the.
Yeah, I think that's part of it is his training process.
Yeah.
Right.
That would be the key thing.
But I understand that, that there are certain ways that things should be communicated so that you um. You have some um confidence that information is getting to the right places so that it's something can be done about it. As opposed to um perhaps using you as the first line of, however, I, I'd rather not go into it right now. I'd rather tell you that either we've solved it or we didn't help solve it.
Yeah, yeah. All I want to do is solve it at the lowest possible.
Absolutely. Well, it makes it a lot simpler then. Then we don't have to hear it so much either.
Yes, because we're not the ones that, we're not.
We will, and I, I like it that.
If, if I hear one more time, I have no guidelines.
No, that's good. And then I also wanna.
It is.
So other than that, uh, the only thing I want to add is we have our homelessness um meeting tomorrow.
Uh-huh. One thirty Red Oak.
Yeah, no, it's not the Red Oak. It's a lavender room. That's in, that's in human services down on, on Main Street.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
It's actually in there, yeah.
Thank you.
If you would like, you can take the law, park here and make the law law.
Yeah, thank you. I stand corrected.
So, but it should be good. I mean, we're going over a lot of things. One of the things that I'm gonna bring up is. And that's why I want to make sure if you can be there, Paul, is the point in time count for the summer count.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna be one of the issues that we're gonna talk about.
Got it.
At that. So it's, um, I think it could be important for the future. Obviously, it has no value right now, but someday the future may be it will.
Well, I think there'll be a global value.
Yeah, oh, and it can.
I agree that it will be a local value.
Yep, there's actually some um, benefits for some of the local organizations. Um, Resource Center actually has also commented that they can use some of those numbers for, to help them. So there's actually, there is actually some benefit to some of the organizations uh being able to pull those numbers and show those numbers. It's. My portion, HUD doesn't see those numbers, but hopefully somebody will acknowledge that same, knowing that we get heavily impacted during the summer. But it's more so than the other um cities and whatnot because of our, our acceptable climate. So. Anyways, um, other than that, that's, I'm just gonna leave it there. We need to, in this meeting, so we need to adjourn and we're gonna go into.
Quick break.
And, yeah, we need to take a quick break.
Yes.
Arthur.
That's still on.
Yeah. For, for close session. And everyone else should be bounced off.
ABC? Who was Siski then? Siski.
Yes. So I got, yeah, I got, I got, got with everybody to get.
Yeah, at the end.
At the end, well, as soon as we get down.
Jenny, you're supposed to bring brownies.
Oh, my.